Call the meeting to order. This is the October 15, 2019, meeting of the Fairfield Town Planning and Zoning Commission. I'd like to apologize to my fellow commissioners and everyone that I've been absent the last two meetings. Happy to be back. First item on the agenda is the meeting minutes from September 24, 2019. Before we get there, I am up to speed on everything and we'll have Commissioner Di Giacomo sit for Commissioner Meyer in his absence. Okay? So, first is meeting minutes, September 24, 2019.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Francis.
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Corcoran. Thank you. Anybody have any comments or questions? Good? I didn't have any. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, abstentions? The minutes are adopted unanimously. Next is a TOD study, review of the final report for adoption. This was tabled from last time on September 24.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, a couple agendas ago, we distributed the final report of our Transit Oriented Development Study, which was an effort that began 16 months ago and has culminated with this report. We had, just to refresh the commission's recollection, we had four very well-attended outreach and public engagement meetings with our consultant in June of, last June, in September and October of last year. In February of this year, we had a March 26th kind of policy, kind of planning session where we vetted, where you, I should say, vetted the various recommendations that were offered and reached some consensus on some, rejected some. And then we went to hearing on May 28th to have some public discussion and we got some pretty good public feedback that, some of which we've included in this amendment, amended plan. We do have, there is a bullet summary of key recommendations that was in your, I mean, in your packet. I will go through it if you'd like me to. If you don't think it's necessary, we'll refrain from doing so, but if I'm happy to walk through it if you wish to do so.
All right. Well, I think, thank you. I think it would be helpful. I also think that it would be helpful for you to explain the nature of our motion on the agenda tonight.
Yes.
Right? So, as I understand it, we are moving to adopt the report and these preliminary recommendations as we have proposed, which are all then subject to additional planning sessions and implementation in various ways, whether that's a motion, whether that's an application by the TPZ, the town, a town department, or a developer to amend the regulations to implement these changes. I just think it would be helpful if you gave both the commission as well as the public some guidance as to that process.
Sure. Is, when we went through the planning process, there were a lot of discussions, certain development potential scenarios were discussed, potential options for consideration for future amendments to the zoning regulations were discussed. There were a number of issues that were put on the table. We set a fairly sizable matrix of potential recommendations before this commission for its consideration. And in that meeting in March, well, you, over a longer period of time, you each ranked which of those recommendations you thought you could support and which ones you could not support. And we rejected those where there was consensus of non-support and included those where there was consensus support. But as the chairman said, this is, this is, these are findings and recommendations that come out of a planning discussion that will require future implementation, whether it be by this commission in taking up an application to amend the regulations or whether it be a private applicant looking to make a more modest amendment, a subset, I should say, choosing a subset of these recommendations that might be applicable to a future development project. So, the adoption of this study does not implement any of its recommendations, it simply codifies the consensus recommendations that came out of that study. And those include, and again, this, if you recall, this was a joint effort with the Economic Development Commission. They participated throughout and at their last meeting, they endorsed the plan. So, they voted to recommend its adoption. So, most of the recommendations surround the Fairfield Metro Station area in consideration of potential regulation considerations. One is a reduction of the parcel size to be eligible for the TOD overlay from the present 35,000 square feet to 10,000 square feet to activate potentially a greater number of parcels for redevelopment. We discussed height. Right now, the current height allowance is 60 feet, but there's an adjustment for sloping frontage and the recommendation is to limit the height to five stories with a 70-foot maximum height, but also a requirement to, for a minimum first floor height of 15 feet so that you've got a taller commercial ground floor that's more adaptable to various types of commercial uses. There was a great deal of discussion about the potential of increasing the density of residential occupancy from 50 bedrooms per acre to 75 bedrooms per acre chiefly because of the idea that the 50 percent, I'm sorry, the 50 bedroom per acre limit ten, would tend to create larger dwelling unit sizes and a greater density would allow the space within the other constraints of the regulations to have smaller, a higher percentage of smaller units. There was a lot of discussion about including the opportunity, if we are going to consider a greater density, to increase the set-aside requirement for affordable units. Right now, it's a 10 percent. There was discussion to raise that to a higher percentage. The present, the consultant snapshot view at now said they could support 12 percent, but I'm sure when this issue comes up, there will be other advocates that think that 12 percent may be too low a bar, but, but as now the snapshot view, the report is recommending going from 10 to 12 percent. But the language of the report is such that it certainly allows the possibility for the commission to consider a greater percentage. There was consideration and recommendation to consider the residential-commercial split from 70/30 to 80/20 to match the kind of what we're seeing typically as a four-story to one-story ratio of residential to commercial. Within the metro center area itself, there was some mapping done to identify where the key commercial nodes ought to be in recognition that maybe every parcel isn't necessarily suitable for ground-floor commercial, but to make sure it happens in certain nodes within the corridor. There was a lot of discussion about potential equalizing the parking requirements for dining establishments and retail uses so that as tenants change over from one to the other, there's not a need for applications to the Zoning Board of Appeals to achieve that flexibility. And again, we're talking specifically to the metro area. I know there was a lot of concern on the commission's part when we talked about that in the downtown setting, that that was not an option that the commission was willing to consider. So, again, that's limited to the Fairfield Metro area as all of those, the ones I've mentioned thus far are. There's provisions for priding allowance for shared parking, encouraging car and bike sharing services, and increasing the requirements for landscape buffers and open space set-aside requirements. Particular to downtown, I think clearly the, the public discourse was that there was probably less of an appetite for more downtown than, as compared to the metro center, but nonetheless, there are some recommendations for downtown. Right now, our present height allowance in downtown is five stories or six, 50 feet. So, the recommendation is to reduce that from five stories to four stories, but to allow a 52-foot height, again, to encourage a taller first floor. Modern commercial construction at a 15-foot height ground floor to allow changing in uses at that story height is what we are generally seeing. So, basically, we're talking about reducing the story height, but keeping the allowable overall height roughly the same, 50 to 52 feet. We're also recommending consideration of restricting or eliminating the residential, the 50 percent occupancy limit for residential mixed-use construction and allowing downtown a little bit more in terms of floor area ratio, that is, a total building size as a percentage of lot size from a ratio of two now, or two times a lot size to three. We had discussed a larger version of that, going to three and a half or four, but there was not consensus to go beyond three within amongst the commission, if you recall that discussion. And also, discussion about modifying the minimum residential unit size from 750 feet to 450 feet, which is the minimum that we have in our present regulations for accessory apartments. And also, just some general language about considering further adjustments to parking regulations going forward. So, it's a fairly broad range of proposals that would, you know, identify some, some opportunity to do a little bit more than what our present regulations permit. But as the chairman indicated, again, it's a planning study and the recommendations that flow from that, in order to be codified as regulations, would take further action on this commission's part to do so and further public hearings to implement that.
Okay. Very good. Thank you for that summary. Appreciate all the bullet points. So, the, the action here for us is, is a motion to adopt the report and the key recommendations. If anyone would like to make that.
I move to adopt.
Okay. So moved by Commissioner Corcoran?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Noonan. Commissioner Corcoran, comments?
I think it's a thorough study. We participated in it, went on for a long period of time. I basically agree with all of the recommendations. We had some comments that, for example, about the 12 percent affordable housing that might be quoted in the future as something we support, but I don't think we're passing regulation here.
Correct.
We're just laying out some groundwork for what we might do in the future.
Correct. Commissioner Noonan, anything to add?
Nothing really to add. It's accepted, as Commissioner Corcoran said, a thorough study with good recommendations and should we decide to move forward and incorporate them, we can have a more thorough discussion about it. But I'm satisfied with what the recommendations are at this point.
Good. So, I would like for us to schedule a planning meeting in the near future. I'd like to revisit these, you know, recommendations as, in terms of, you know, implementation and strategies and also how this might fit into the revisions that we're considering now to the POCD. All right. I personally think that the first step in our implementation of this would be to summarize key findings and the policy recommendations in a revision to the, to the master plan that, you know, is underway. We're doing that in conjunction with these various studies, the TOD study here in metro center, the BlackRock TOD study, the Strategic Planning Committee and their, their findings and progress and report and so forth. But, so, we haven't, we haven't had a planning meeting.
Parent conferences.
It was an intercom.
Flashing blue light. I haven't actually seen that since we've been here. So, you know, we can, we can work on scheduling that, right?
Absolutely.
Okay. Any other comments? Yes. Mr. Francis?
I think this was a very well-conducted study and it will be good to bring some development finally to the Commerce Drive area. It will be, it will be good to bring some development and revenue, tax revenue from the Commerce Drive area. I would like to see more of affordable housing percentage and it will, it should bring us some senior housing and some new young employee housing, so that, that'll be terrific. And I hope we'll get a company out of it with a couple of hundred employees, which will really work together with all this new housing for, for our town.
Thank you, Commissioner Francis.
Just one comment?
Yeah. Commissioner McAleese.
I just wanted to add, first, I agree with most of the comments that were said, but just for the public, if you look at this stuff on the website, don't get too nervous. A lot of people have been commenting in emails and that, especially when they show the different variations of possibilities. This is just ideas of things that might or might not happen. It's, I've had so many people comment to me that, "What are you doing all down at the metro center?" That those complexes with 12 buildings and this and that, that's just a possibility of something like the dream, but if we could get 10 percent of that or 20 percent of that or something completely different. But this is just something to guide us, so please.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure that the scenarios A, B, C, and D are still on the website. And those represent different scenarios that were studied by the consultants for different sort of degrees of development. And so, it should be clear to everyone that those are not the, the vision, if you will, of the implementation of the, the regulate, you know, amendments to the regulation. It's sort of a combination of B and C.
Yeah, I think what's important to note from that is the scenarios were kind of put out there is to kind of drive discussion as to what, what the possibilities are. And in the matrix of the development program within the study, it's important to note that that's spelled out in the near term, one to five years, five to 10 years, 10 to 20-year scenario. So, those scenarios are not going to happen overnight. It's a very, it's a long-term look at if, you know, based on the market research and the market study information that was presented by the consulting team, that if we were to make certain, you know, policy changes, what might happen? What level of investment might we see in the long term? It's not anything that's going to happen overnight, but this is a longer-term view. And before you do vote, and I hope you do vote, I do want, on a personal note, from a staff perspective, thank the commission for its level of engagement in this process. It took a great deal of our time internally, but you all spent a great deal of time personally beyond the normal scheduled meetings, participating in these discussions fully and meaningfully and, and congratulate the public that was out in consistently good attendance at these meetings. So, I think this really represents a really well, a great deal of public input to help you with your consideration. But again, this, this is a planning process and this is part of the overall POCD effort, although specific to specific areas. So, it was a big effort and we were really pleased with the process from the staff level and how it played out with our consulting team and I think we really got a good result.
Good. Any other comments? So, the motion on the table is to adopt the report and the preliminary recommendations. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, abstentions? That motion passes unanimously. Thank you, everyone. Next is 123, 135 Pine Creek Avenue, review of proposed sale of town property to an adjacent owner for recommendation due to the RTM.
Okay. Pursuant to state statute, certain activities that the town engages in require a report from this commission. It's a non-binding report to the RTM. And in this particular case, there's a proposal to convey an eight-foot by 100-foot long strip of land from the town at 135 Pine Creek Avenue, which is a sewer pump station presently. The owner at 123 is seeking to purchase that strip to be able to widen their existing driveway to allow a little bit better maneuverability for their vehicles. The town parcel, if this eight-foot wide by 100-foot long strip is conveyed, would remain a compliant parcel and would not hinder the current or future use of the site as a sewer pump station. So, that is what is before you. The, there is a purchase price agreement and all sorts of information in your packet. The proposal is to, the purchase price for this is $66,000 for this eight, 800 square foot strip of land. And if you have any, that's all I have at this point, Mr. Chairman, but again, you're making a recommendation to the RTM. If you don't think this is a good idea, then the RTM would require a two-thirds majority to, to agree to the deal. If you, if you have no objection or think it's a favorable idea, that would be a simple majority on the RTM's side. So, you're just making a recommendation in the overall planning scheme of things, whether it's a good or a bad idea for the town to divest itself or sell this eight-foot strip to the adjacent property.
Okay. Thank you. So, the, the motion would be to recommend to the RTM to approve the transaction. Yes?
Correct.
Commissioner Corcoran?
I'll still move.
Okay. Sorry, I didn't hear. I hear two. Who wants to do it?
I still move to accept the recommendation.
Commissioner Corcoran, so moves?
Second.
Commissioner Francis seconds the motion. Commissioner Corcoran?
I don't see any issue with this. It doesn't seem to adversely affect the town in any way and there's no reason, I don't see any reason to not do it.
Seems like, at least my understanding from the plans, Mr. Wen, is that there's, the driveway is existing on the property?
The driveway does not presently exist as it's shown on that plan. The plan before you is how the driveway would be extended. I have a picture, you know, hold it up. The driveway's straight. It's a straight shot through. The little bump out that they show on that plan is what they would implement.
That's what they want to do.
Should they, should they achieve the land purchase.
Yeah. Commissioner Corcoran?
So, this structure doesn't exist yet. If they have more land, could they change their proposal for what's built on the land?
No, the house, I'll pass.
I don't see that in the.
There is a house presently on the property.
But not this house?
This house.
Okay. All right.
This house exists as it's shown. The driveway presently is coincident with the dashed line. And what they'd like to do is extend the width of their driveway into the parcel that they're seeking to purchase.
Right. So, what's confusing is that we didn't have this photo in the packet.
Yes, I'm sorry. It occurred to me this morning that you didn't have that, so I took that picture.
And the plans that we do have says proposed two-story house.
Yeah. There's also an aerial photograph that shows a different house.
Yeah.
Yeah, there was, the, the house on the survey is built and constructed.
So, the garage.
And what they're, what they're seeking to achieve here is to.
There's some pictures in the appraisal.
Yeah, yeah. So, the garage faces the pump station.
Correct. It's a through driveway from one street to the other. Pine Creek Avenue is one way at that location and French Street behind it is one way, so it's a through driveway and the, and the garage doors are perpendicular to the street line.
Mr. Wen?
Yeah. Commissioner Noonan?
123 I see is a pre-existing non-conforming lot. Will the additional area make it conforming? Certainly will help, but will it make it?
No, it will make it less non-conforming, it won't get it to conforming.
Fair enough.
Okay. Seems like a fair price. Seems like.
Yeah, I see no reason not to, not to approve it.
Anyone else? Commissioner Francis?
And I would add that the town engineer stated that not interfering with the action at the pump station.
Correct.
It's pivotal.
Any other comments, questions for staff? Okay. Ready to vote?
Yep.
Okay, the motion is to recommend to approve the transaction. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, abstentions? The motion carries unanimously.
Sure.
So, the next item is 28 Reef Road, request of Al De Guido for recertification of the seasonal waffle shack at the Sagatuck Suites.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, this last October, a year ago, the commission approved the installation of a waffle shack in front of Sagatuck Suites, which is primarily a, an ice cream store and they don't do tremendous amount of ice cream business in the winter months, so they put a waffle shack in last year. One of the conditions of approval similar to outdoor dining establishments, the commission opposed the one-year recertification on that, so it is up for recertification.
Very good. Thank you. Can I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner McAleese.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Noonan. Thank you. Mr. Wen, have we had any complaints or any negative feedback from the waffle shack?
It's only, the only one complaint, I don't think it was specific to the waffle shack, but there's a, because it was during, it was more recent than, is this particular business does host quite a bit of charity, charity activity by which they would allow a group to hold an event to raise money. And from time to time, we did get, I did get one email complaint that there was a day in which it was difficult to navigate the sidewalk across the facility because there were so many people at this particular event. I think that's kind of a positive thing to have that kind of activity in the downtown, but, but we shared that email with the, with the business owner and asked them to be mindful of, to allow pedestrian passage when they have events. And they have removed a couple of signs that they had out there, so.
Yeah.
Beyond that, no, no.
Okay.
Nothing that I would consider problematic.
Any compliments?
I think it's, from what I've heard, I think it's been pretty well-received. I mean, again, this, this particular business does a fair amount of sponsoring of community events and holding some concerts and ice skating stuff on Sherman Green, so all in all, I think it's been a positive.
I can speak with some authority on that point. As a, as a middle school teacher, my kid at Little Middle School, they love Sagatuck Suites. They think it's great to be able to skate out there in the winter when the ice rink is set up. All the other good things they talk about that they do with the music and the concerts, it's a real hub for.
Of course.
Eleven-to-15-year-olds in the middle of town, so.
Absolutely. Do they talk about the Waffle House?
Well, we have discussions about the ice cream, but, yes, they do. They talk about the Waffle House. They, they love the store and I see them there every time I go there, so.
Excellent. Any other commissioners have any other comments? Commissioner Francis?
Since they were having Dunka Cop to raise money for the scholarship fund, that was well-attended.
Yes. That, it is. I, we've been, certainly. And my kids enjoy it. Yeah, so. All right. Ready to vote? So, the motion is to approve. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, abstentions? Okay, the motion carries unanimously. Next is new applications to recommend a public hearing, 1073 North Benson Road, special exception application of Fairfield University for an addition to an existing building for a student wellness center in the double A zone.
This, Mr. Chairman, is an addition to an existing building. The Health and Wellness Center for Students right now is not central to campus, it's up in the, if you're familiar with the campus, up in the Dolan Building, they're looking to do an addition to Jokes Hall, which is kind of in the freshman quad to, to create a health and wellness facility for the students that's more proximate to where the majority of their clientele actually lives. So, it's really, it's, it's an addition to an existing building that does require a public hearing.
Okay. Thank you. Public hearing's required.
Yeah, since it's required, move to public hearing.
Ready?
Second.
Okay. Motion to move to public hearing by Commissioner McAleese and seconded by Commissioner Noonan. Any other questions for staff or comments? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, abstentions? Okay, move to public hearing unanimously. Next is old business, zoning regulation amendment, application of the Hull House Group LLC to amend Section 12.5.5, permitted uses in the neighborhood design district, public hearing 910.
Okay. This was tabled at the last meeting. This proposal seeks to allow greater flexibility in how residential use can be implemented within the neighborhood design business district while proposing to maintain the 50 percent residential floor area cap that the regulations currently require. Again, I'll, by way of background, the existing office buildings at 1960 Bronson Road were built in 1973, 14 years prior to the establishment of the Neighborhood Design District, and at that time, there was not the present requirement that businesses had to be customer-client, foot-traffic-related businesses. And in fact, for many years, these buildings were owned kind of by a closed door. It was a direct marketing firm that didn't really have customers and clients coming and going. In August of 2017, the commission denied a proposal to amend the regulations to limit residential use to 50 percent of the floor area of all the buildings on the property rather than any single building. They were looking to, at that time, put in four apartments in the percentage, in one of the two buildings, in that percentage, and that one particular building would have exceeded 50 percent of the total floor of that particular building, but not 50 percent of the total floor area on the property. The commission denied that application in November, or I'm sorry, in September. The commission denied that application in November, or, I'm sorry, in September of 2017. In, in November, the Zoning Board of Appeals approved a variance that would have basically achieved the same goal, is to allow that proposal to go forward through a variance application rather than amendment to the regulations. And the Zoning Board of Appeals granted that variance. But it was appealed, and that variance was, was overturned. So, the applicant is back with a revised proposal that would allow ground-floor residential occupancy in the case of properties that have more than one building. As long as at least one building has commercial occupancy on the ground floor, and the total residential occupancy, still it would be capped at 50% of the total floor area. When this was discussed at the hearing and at the last meet, or the meeting prior to last, there were concerns raised by the commission regarding the broader potential application of such a regulation. And so, in your packet, we have crafted some revisions, potential revisions, that would restrict the language more so than the present proposal. So, in your packet, there's a page that has three versions of potential language, should you wish to pursue that. The first basically would say, "All the language that's in the current regulations would stay the same with the exception of this. In the case of a property with multiple buildings, ground-floor residential occupancy may be permitted if such occupancy is not within a street-facing storefront and has a minimum street-line setback of 70 feet. In such a case, more than two stories may be devoted to residential use, but in no case shall the residential floor area exceed more than 50% of the total floor area of all buildings on a single property." The concerns that were discussed were, you know, you didn't want to have those close to the street storefronts in these small districts convert to residential use on, on the ground floor. And again, keeping in mind that this would only be potentially applicable to buildings or properties that have more than one building, there aren't many of those. Within the current snapshot view of the current configurations of buildings in the Neighborhood Design District, there are three parcels that have more than one building on them. So, the first option, option A, would, would, talks about not being within a street-facing storefront and maintaining a minimum of a 70-foot street-line setback for such a residential occupancy. The vast majority of, of commercial occupancies within the Neighborhood Design District are much closer to the street than 70 feet. The second option, option B, is really identical to the, to the first option, except we've taken out the street-facing storefront limitation in case there was some concern about the ambiguity of what does a street-facing storefront mean. So, it's really the same thing, minimum street-line setback of 70 feet without the language that says "street-facing storefront." And then the last option is really the same as the second option, except that it would limit the residential use to no more than one building on, on the property. So, pretty similar constructs that we were trying to attempt to address the concerns because it seemed like there was some discussion that rather than, you know, foreclosing the possibility, what if we considered a little bit different limiting language to try to achieve what this particular applicant was seeking, but yet not open the door to, to possible ramifications that you didn't want to, to have happen.
Okay. Thank you for that. So, procedurally, the applicant has made a, a motion to amend the regulations, and there could be a motion to approve that. Or someone could move to adopt one of these, to approve the, the application as modified by one of these variants that have been proposed by, by staff to accommodate concerns that the commissioners raised at the, the last hearing, executive session. So, I did watch that, that tape, and so I'm thoroughly conversant with the, the issues. I also remember when we considered the, the applicant's, or, or earlier, previous iteration of this. So, for purposes of our executive session and consideration of this, we, we need to get a, a motion on the table. Another alternative is, is a motion to deny the application. Clearly, that's, that's another permutation. I think from what I heard, there's some appetite to try to do something here, but that is certainly another alternative that, that we could pursue. So, for purposes of getting this underway, suggest somebody makes a motion. Commissioner, Commissioner Corcoran?
Just for, just for the purpose of getting the discussion going, I propose that we accept the applicant's...
The applicant's. Okay. So, the motion's been made to approve the application as filed. Do I have a second? Second by Commissioner Francis. Okay. Commissioner Corcoran, it's your motion. You want, you want to start?
Yeah, just briefly, I, there are two things that concern me here. One is that this looks a lot like spot zoning. And, and I think that's one of the things that, what we brought up, that we're trying to make this apply only to a specific property, but we're doing it in the form of applying it to all the similar districts. With the understanding that there's no other situation like this in the other districts.
Well, I mean, so there are three properties which have multiple buildings on them that might be subject to this amendment to this regulation. Are there...
Are they within 70 feet?
That's, yeah. So, now, that, as, as, as written, the, or as applied for, the proposal would, as you identified at the last hearing, would, would apply across the board. Are there other properties that have two buildings?
Well, it's, it's, I agree that, that as the options as drafted, in the present construct of the properties, would, would be limited to a very small subset of, of the home. But, you know, there were concerns raised about aggregation of property or complete redevelopment of new properties that, that might do something different than what's there now. So, while, you know, I, I agree to some extent that, that the, the drafts are fairly limited in terms of how many properties they'd apply to today, you know, there may be broader capability in the future with redevelopment of existing property.
Yeah. I mean, I'm not, I'm not insensitive to the difficulties that, you know, the pre-existing conditions are facing, right, with, in, in, in that, that circumstance. And there may be other situations that would arise in the future that, you know, would, would be similar.
Yeah. It seems that this is a perfect case to go to Zoning Board of Appeals. I mean, it's, and it did, and it failed. It seems to me that that's the remedy before that board for this kind of situation.
Well, the board approved it. The board agreed and approved the variance, but it didn't pass judicial scrutiny on, on appeal because the, you know, the bar for what's technically considered hardship is a pretty, is a pretty high bar.
Yeah.
Strictly construed.
So, that's, that's a fair point. Commissioner Levy?
Yes. Now, I would move to deny the application as submitted, but instead amend it or pass a, an amendment consistent with proposal B prepared by staff, which I think would allow for the maximum flexibility, both for this particular parcel and any other properties that may have two more, two or more buildings, or in the future may have two or more buildings. It allows for flexibility, yet maintaining both a residential and commercial use. The 70-foot setback requirement for residential would preclude somebody taking, you know, a current storefront or business, coffee shop, or something of that nature. You know, we don't want that to be lost to the neighborhood and a residence being put in. So, that 70-foot setback serves the purpose to avoid that problem, and yet allowing, particularly in a situation like this where it did predate, predate our current zoning, and I'm sure there are others like that, I mean, a lot of these districts are older in nature, would allow the flexibility of both residential, commercial in these transitional districts. So, I would deny the application as submitted, but instead amend it to provide for passing proposal B as prepared by staff.
Thank you. So, procedurally, it would, it would be then a vote, just the way that you've posited it, it would be, you know, a vote on this would fail, and then you'd make a new motion. Or you could ask Mr. Corcoran for a friendly amendment to his motion to approve, subject to the, the amendments that are, are here in, in Exhibit B, as prepared by staff.
I guess I could ask.
Do you want to do that?
Sure. Mark?
I, I have a few more questions.
Okay. Well, I mean, that's, that's where we're going, that's where it'll go. So, you have a question for staff?
Yes. So, are there any circumstances where somebody owns a residence in one of these districts where they're precluded as selling their property as a residence because of this?
No. If you've got a, a residence, a building that's 100% residential occupancy today, as a, and there are plenty of those in, in this district, that could remain 100% residential occupancy under this proposal because it would be a current non-conforming condition.
And that can continue through a sale?
It can. Yes, it could. And in most cases, again, I'm not aware of anywhere there's multiple dwellings on a single parcel. There's adjacent parcels that have each a single residence, but this proposal would not impact those parcels. They could stay. It wouldn't, somebody could have a house, if they wanted to keep it a house and sell it as a house, it could stay.
You raise a good point, though, because, and actually, I hadn't thought about that. I, I also, just to sort of get to the point, like, I think B, the language in B here, the, the most, and not the applicant's proposal. But you raise a good point that there do exist residential properties in these zones around town, and it's not like having a residential on the ground floor of a multi-use building 70 feet off the property line would be sort of out of character or out of place in, you know, the usual. I mean, and it does keep the, the mixed-use requirement of, you know, 50% of the total floor area of all the buildings on a single property. So...
One more question. Could you just briefly say the difference between the three proposals again?
Sure. The, the, the first proposal would, again, and if you've got multiple buildings, you can have ground-floor residential occupancy if it's not within a street-facing storefront.
Street-facing.
Yeah. And have a minimum street-line setback of 70 feet, and then in no case can it be more than 50% of the total floor area. B is really the same, except it eliminates, we've dropped out of that version, the requirement for it to be prohibited in a street-facing storefront. It still has the 70-foot setback requirement, but the language, within a street, not within a street-facing storefront is the only thing that's been, the only difference between A and B. C is the same as B, except it limits the residential occupancy to no more than one building.
C, C adds the requirement of no more than one of the buildings on the property?
Yes. It says, it says, "Ground-floor residential occupancy may be permitted in one building."
Right.
Whereas B and A say, "Ground-floor residential occupancy permitted if..."
Yeah. So, I mean, I think that the, if we're, if we're inclined to amend this regulation that, and I take back what I said before, that our choice here is between B and C. And...
Yeah. The difference between B and C is, is C limits the ground-floor residential occupancy to a single building.
Yeah. So, you don't, so you, so you wouldn't have, and it's still this 70-foot, you know, setback, but then you still wouldn't have, you know, an entire cluster of buildings, two buildings of that being residential on the ground floor.
Exactly.
Yeah. So, I mean, I, I think I favor C. And, you know, I, I, yeah, go ahead.
I would agree with that assessment. I, that was my major concern in our last meeting. The, the reading of the applicant's zoning change was, I'm sorry, I can't find the point right now, where they wanted it to be, as long as at least one building has commercial occupancy. And it was flipping the whole...
Yeah. Concept.
The whole concept of the NDD.
Yeah.
To maintain the, the majority of commercial space.
Right.
So, I, I agree. I think the C does a little bit of both. Gives them some room and allows us to maintain the NDDs.
Right. So, yeah, Commissioner Francis?
Yes, C was my choice, too, because I think it's most in keeping with our zoning regulations, and we're as farthest from spot zoning. And yet, this property has a problem, it predates zoning, and I'm sensitive to it. He's got a problem.
Okay. All right. Does anyone else have any other questions? Commissioner Levy?
Just with C, if, for instance, the developer wanted to maintain it 50/50, and you, you could end up with 100% residence in the building closest to the street line and all commercial on the setback building. Whereas Plan B would allow for...
No, no.
We'd still have to maintain, as long as it would still have to be, the residential occupancy would still need to be 70 feet.
It would be 70 feet back.
So, assuming you had multiple buildings, each were at least 70 feet back, yes, that would be, that would be a possibility.
It just means the one closer to the street could be all residential, and the one that's farther could be all commercial. Whereas Plan B would allow flexibility there.
Wow. That, so, if I'm hearing you correctly, then the same could be true under B.
Well, the only difference really between the two is, is C just limits the occupancy to a...
To a single building.
The ground floor to only one building. It doesn't dictate whether it's the closer, farther building. Neither scenario does that, so...
Right. I mean, there could be a further modification here, which would require that there be commercial in each building on the property, notwithstanding the above.
How would that help the applicant?
I'm, I'm thinking of planning, you know? The, the issue, right? I mean, I don't, I don't know that we, that we need it.
Yeah. Then we'd be back to our existing regulations, basically.
Yeah.
In option C, doesn't it say that the residential has to be the building that's 70 feet back?
Right. So, that's in the case of the property, multiple buildings, the ground-floor residential occupancy may be permitted in one building if that occupancy has a minimum setback of 70 feet. So, it would only be allowed in the ground floor of that building which has a 70-foot setback.
So, is that, that's different from what you said, right? You were saying that it could be in the, near the street.
It could be nearer, but it would still have to be 70 feet.
Okay. Right. I think the scenario could be you could have a building 70, and another one 90.
90, but that's, I mean, come on. That's, that's not happening.
I, I could go with either.
Yeah. All right. So, the friendly amendment to Commissioner Corcoran's motion is to, I guess, amend the applicant's proposal to C in staff comments.
I'd agree to that. I do agree to that.
Okay.
I'd amend it accordingly.
All right. Commissioner Levy so moves. Commissioner Corcoran amends his motion. Commissioner Francis, who is the second?
Who's down there?
Commissioner Francis. You agree to that amendment? Yes? Mr. Francis agrees. All right. Option C, right, it's the, it's the, so the motion now is to approve the application to amend the regulation, however, the applicant's language is revised to that which is reflected in C of staff comments.
Yes.
Okay? Any other questions or comments on this? All right. All in favor, say aye. Aye? Any opposed? Any opposed? Obstentions? Okay, so that motion passes unanimously. Next item is 60 Round Hill Road, special permit application of RBC Heim for addition, for an addition to an existing industrial building in the designed industrial district.
Okay. This proposal seeks a 15,000-square-foot addition to an existing 83,000-square-foot industrial manufacturing facility, to allow the facility to maintain operations during construction. The proposal would first implement temporary loading facilities and widening of the Round Hill Road driveway.
Sorry.
The ultimate proposed finished product would consolidate two existing driveways on Round Hill Road to a single driveway, provide for improved drainage for the parking lot, provide for concrete curbs and sidewalks, new shade tree planting is proposed pursuant to our regulations. The considerations for a special permit are found in Section 25.7.7 of our regulations. Is the development shown on the site and architectural plans of such character to harmonize with the neighborhood, to accomplish a transition in character between areas of unlike character, to protect property values in the neighborhood, to observe and enhance the appearance and beauty of the community, and to avoid undue traffic congestion. And I think you heard, you know, at the hearing, this is, you know, longstanding industrial building in town that was considering relocating, and this addition would allow them to improve their operations and stay in town, which I think is an important consideration. That's all I have as questions.
Thank you. Can I have a motion? Motion to approve by Commissioner Noonan, second by Commissioner McAuliffe. Commissioner Noonan?
Good application, from a good citizen in town, meets our considerations, a special permit, small addition to the building, so certainly harmonizes with the area, no issue with transition in character, no issue with property values. The change to the driveway to a single driveway seemed to be helpful, would potentially help for traffic issues, though, there really didn't seem to be any traffic issues to begin with. The driveway was certainly given enough light of sight. I would approve this, I'd approve the application.
Very good. Commissioner McAuliffe?
No further comment.
He said it all.
He said it all.
Anybody, anybody else have any other comments? No? I also thought this was a great application. It's what we want to see, some investment in business in our town. So, the motion is to approve. All in favor, say aye. Aye? Any opposed? Obstentions? The application is approved unanimously. So, next is 3135 Easton Turnpike, special exception application of Sacred Heart University pertaining to a proposed lobby addition in the R3 zone.
Okay. Sacred Heart University seeks to provide an entrance lobby for better connection between the existing buildings comprising the West Campus, also known as the former GE property. The two buildings there do not communicate well with each other in terms of their physical ability to get from one to the other. The existing drop-off loop will be enhanced for student shuttle access with better pedestrian amenities to provide for a focal point of access to the facility. The relevant standards for consideration of a special exception are, is number one, is the location type, character size, and use of the building in harmony with and conform to the appropriate orderly development of town and neighborhood, and not hinder or discourage the use of adjacent property or impair its value. Two, is the nature and location of use in buildings or structures such that there is adequate access for fire protection. Three, are the streets serving the proposed use adequate to care of prospective traffic? Four, is the proposed use in compliance with the plan of conservation development. And, you know, this is really more of a functional improvement rather than an opportunity to increase the occupancy of these buildings, so that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Thank you. Can I have a motion on this one?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner McAuliffe.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Noonan.
I think this application addresses the four main relevant considerations, and I commend Sacred Heart. I think this is a terrific addition to that complex, sort of putting their stamp on it, unifying the buildings, and, you know, to me, it's a win-win.
Excellent. Commissioner Noonan?
No further comment. He said it all.
Very good. Anybody from that end of the table? Okay. Yeah, I agree. It's nice to see the, you know, improvements.
Sure.
Okay. Motion is to approve. All in favor, say aye. Aye? Any opposed? Obstentions? The application is approved unanimously. Next is the coastal site plan review, 2117-2118 Fairfield Beach Road, coastal site plan application of 2117-2118 Fairfield Beach Road LLC for the construction of a single-family dwelling in the beach district.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, rather than reading the report piece that I had prepared for you, over the last several days, you've received and forwarded several requests for consideration of this matter to be held to a public hearing. This matter was submitted to this commission last summer, I believe in July, and the commission voted at that time to hold a public hearing. That public hearing never happened, because the applicant was withdrawn. There was a subsequent application, the ZORe Board of Appeals, that was made that was denied, so the application is essentially back in its original form. So, rather than going further, I just wonder if you wanted to consider sending it to public hearing.
I agree.
Move to public hearing.
Okay. Motion to move this to the public hearing by Commissioner Noonan.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Corcoran. I also support that. I was the one who advocated for a public hearing over the summer. Any further comment or questions from anyone? Okay. All in favor, say aye. Aye? Any opposed? Obstentions? The item is moved to public hearing unanimously. Thank you. Our next item is a public hearing. Want to take a two-minute? Yeah, and I am, the first item is 936 Sasko Hill Road, special exception application of the Country Club of Fairfield pertaining to the construction of a new clubhouse, pro-shop, and cart barn in the AAA zone. And I am going to recuse myself from this application. We will take a two-minute recess, just to get configured.
I might take that point for the word, thank you so much, as always. And give you a good overview of this application, which is for a special exception approval with regard to the construction of a new clubhouse, pro-shop, and cart barn at the club property located at 936 Sasko Hill Road. That property is located in the residence AAA zone, and the use to which this property has and will continue to be put in the past and in the future is a permitted use pursuant to Section 5.1.4D of the regulations. By way of background, about five years ago, the Board of Governors of the club appointed a facilities planning committee, and to review and analyze both the condition of the current facilities, and also the needs of the club moving forward, to define those needs for the future while preserving the very historically significant past of which the club is very proud. That five years of effort led to the plan that is in front of you tonight for the new clubhouse and pro-shop cart barn building. A little bit about the current clubhouse. It's 57 years old, and unfortunately, has many deficiencies, which is what provoked the Board of Governors' action in the first place, five years ago. As I point out in my statement of use, the kitchen area is functionally obsolete, it does not meet current building or fire code requirements. The mechanical systems are all significantly dated, the boiler's over 50 years old, and the plumbing and electrical systems have presented difficulty on an ongoing basis. That beautiful iconic balcony overlooking the 18th hole has significant structural problems and has been susceptible to leak. And indeed, the entire clubhouse is not compliant with current ADA standards, the grill room is inadequate to meet the demands of our current membership, the locker rooms and the restroom facilities are outdated. So, we come before you tonight with a proposal for a new clubhouse, but it's very interesting in the context of the fact that the club has maintained a very significant priority here of, one, maintaining the same general location of the current clubhouse, and also the understated nature of the building, and it's very familiar and aspects of unique charm. They hired Mark Finley, Jay Belade, and his team to undertake this design for us. Mark is going to give you a brief overview, along with Jay, in a minute, of our architectural design, but I think you'll be pleased to see that it is understated, it fits with the character of the very special neighborhood that it's located in. From a functional standpoint, it's going to address all those building and health code issues that I referenced before. It's going to provide us with a facility that is totally ADA compliant. It will improve operational efficiencies with regard to our food services and the service we provide our members on an ongoing basis, which of course was a major request of our members. And the new kitchen will address the significant needs that we have for improvement in that area. We have new office space for our very much cramped staff, and men's and women's locker rooms and restroom facilities that are being properly refitted for the current needs of our membership. The current clubhouse is 15,096 square feet. The new clubhouse, providing all of those aspects that I've referred to, is not significantly larger. It's 18,909 square feet. As I've said before, and as I think you'll see from the renderings, that some of which, I think most of which you already have, the design is understated and very consistent with the aesthetics of the original clubhouse. The existing onsite parking of 116 spaces will be maintained. This proposal is made as intended and will in fact address the needs and desires of our current membership. It's not going to result in any significant increase in membership, that's not its purpose, nor will it be its effect. The existing levels of membership will be maintained, and therefore, the maintenance of the existing onsite parking is appropriate in accordance with Section 28.6.0A of your regulations. We did have an approval, did get an approval from the Conservation Commission, acting as the Inland Wetlands Agency, in August of this year. The club made a very strong commitment as part of that application to improve water quality with upgrades to the stormwater system, and it also, it made the commitment to connecting to the town sewer, which eliminates the onsite septic system that's for many decades served the clubhouse. That sewer system to be installed at the town's cost, excuse me, at the, at the club's cost, will benefit our neighbors along Sasko Hill Road. Connections will be put in place for that new sewer line. The WPCA was very excited about this, they've approved this project, so there'll be a collateral benefit here to the neighbors on Sasko Hill Road who will have the option, if and when they choose to, to hook up to the sanitary sewer system. So, we received a great deal of enthusiasm with regard to this application and those environmental components from both the Wetlands Agency and the WPCA. A code enforcement meeting was held on August 6, 2019, and we've taken into consideration all the comments and recommendations that were made at that time. So, briefly and succinctly, what I'd like to do is just give you a brief overview of the application. All these boards that you have here, you already have in your package. The site plan is, that I have, is the same. We have colored it for purposes of tonight's presentation, but it is not a new document. Mr. Mark Lankor of Dymar will take you briefly through our site layout and site engineering, and then I'll ask Mark and Jay to give you a brief overview with regard to our architectural design.
Thank you, John. For the public record, my name is Mark Lankor. I'm principal engineer with Dymar, located at 800 Main Street South in Southbury, Connecticut. John has done a very good job. I think I'm going to actually hire him as an engineer, because he does a great job of actually being able to bring the light of everything that we've done here. Just a brief overview, the site is in excess of 154 acres. As John alluded to, we do have our conservation approval, and with that, there were no direct impacts to any wetlands, and the only indirect impacts were in the upland review area, but those all exist in the areas that have already have existing disturbance. As John also stated, the building itself is now going to come in full compliance, especially with the frontline setback, and the, the, the building itself meets all the height requirements. With regards to the parking, the 166 spaces are what remain and what is going to be proposed. The parking will be meeting some of the current, and current technical and safety standards, which the current parking condition does not. This is including for grading, circulation, access, ADA compliance. In your packet, you also will note that there are some templates that show how emergency vehicles can come into and out of the property now, fully be able to circulate and access without any interference or encumbrance of the site itself. Sidewalk, the sidewalks themselves are going to be more convenient to the membership and the visitors who come to the site. All of them are going to be compliant with current ADA standards. We have the proper number ADA-compliant parking spaces, which do not exist today. And with regards to the sewer, yes, the sewer is a big, is a big deal here. The clubhouse, the club itself, it's taken a while to look at this, but in the, in the end, they elected to connect to the town sewer. What this is going to do is provide a reduction of nitrogen to the Long Island Sound and the watershed in which the club is tributary to. So, we find that as a very, very positive, positive improvement. It will be a low-pressure sewer, and then the connection will be for nine houses. Again, they will have the opportunity to opt in at any time, and we hope over the period of time they will, as each one of those properties also will reduce loading to the, nitrogen loading to the watershed. The drainage system is an improvement over what currently exists, which is antiquated, 50 years, it's been sitting there, and, and there's really no treatment that comes off of the current site. So, the stormwater treatment training that is going to be introduced includes rain gardens, biofiltration, underground detention, sediment chambers, a bioremediation basin located here, and, including the, the taking of the existing septic system and turning that into a stormwater recharge system. So, as much as that system is going to be abandoned for the purpose of wastewater, it's going to be reintroduced for the purpose of treating stormwater. It's a common practice today that when you have this opportunity, we have good sandy soils in that area, and it would work efficiently to, to, to treat stormwater. The club pro-shop, it will be all served by public water and natural gas. There will be an emergency generator onsite to support the vital building needs. And then lastly, the parking lot and the pedestrian ways will have onsite lighting that will be, will be monitored, and will have a timer and dimmer capability. And in your package, there's a photometric plan which provides and demonstrates that the, the plan conforms to your regulations. So, with that, I'd like to introduce the architects.
As Mark Finley and Jay Belade of Mark Finley Architects come forward, one thing I should have mentioned, which Mark Lankor did mention, the present clubhouse is non-conforming to the street setback, the new clubhouse will be conforming, so we are eliminating that nonconformity. Mark and Jay?
Thank you. Mark Finley, Mark Finley Architects in Southport, Connecticut. To the site plan for one second. So, what we did here is the existing clubhouse is very square and broad, and it exists in the setback, in the street setback, so the plan was we made the building more linear. We couldn't really go any closer to the golf course, but we were able to pull the new building into, out of the street setback. So, the biggest change here in this building is that we took the kitchen and put it on the south side of the building. It, right now, is on the north side of the building, and what happens is, you know, really the main parking for members and guests is on the north side. So, the flip of the kitchen to the south side allowed us to create more functions on the view to the west, which is incredible. So, we have dining rooms, there's four dining rooms and a lounge. So, basically, we took the lounge that's here now, and we moved it to the view. Lower level consists of kitchen, informal dining, covered porches, and much better men's and ladies locker rooms. The proposed pro-shop and cart barn, we've consolidated the building, it's much more efficient than what's there. It's a smaller building. We have 28 carts stored downstairs with bag storage. We have 1,700 square feet of pro-shop and offices, men's and ladies rooms on the first floor with covered porch that wraps the whole building. floor with covered porch that wraps the whole building.
Jay Valade from Mark Finley Architects. So our elevations, what we tried to do is keep the same scale of, of the building that's out there and keep it kind of one story from, from the street side. If you're familiar with the site, it slopes off towards the golf course. So from the street, we wanted to keep it feeling one story. The materials are clattered, asphalt roof, and whitewashed brick. We have a cupola on, in the center to kind of still give it some significance and have some presence so that, that you know it's not just another house along the road, but it is, it is a more public building. So the four elevations all have the same sort of materials. On the backside, towards the golf course, it is two stories because the slope falls away, and the renderings kind of show you what we have from, from the golf course. The pro shop with the, with the golf carts below, same, same mix of materials. Actually, we don't have any of the whitewashed brick on, on the pro shop, but gentle slope roof, asphalt, and it kind of shifts around and complements the main building as it sits.
So basically, we're building a brand-new old building. That's what we're trying to do here.
Thank you, gentlemen. I want to put that front elevation up because I think it speaks volumes to the commitment and the, and the priority that the club had moving forward with this since the beginning, that they wanted to do something that was consistent with the aesthetics of the, the original club, its history, and that would be complementary to the neighborhood. And I really, really, really think that they have achieved that, and we hope you will agree. Before I summarize, you know, the one thing I did want to mention, as I indicated, we had our code meeting in August, and we certainly have, you know, dealt with and responded affirmatively to those code comments in the plans. The one thing we did, are not proposing, and, and I know you, ladies and gentlemen, thoroughly read the code minutes, so I wanted to be proactive, and we'd ask you not to impose here, is the, is the recommendation for sidewalks. And the reason we don't want to do that, obviously, is not economic. We're, you know, the hooking up to the sewer and other commitments that are evidenced by this project, this is not financial. But here is why we hope you won't do it. First of all, it's not in character with the neighborhood. Our neighbors, I don't mean to speak for them, but we vetted this project, you know, we, we sent letters to neighbors, we had a reception, not too many people came because they seemed satisfied. But nobody wants, nobody wants a sidewalk there. They're not there now, and, and a sidewalk to nowhere, which is what this sidewalk would be, would be peculiarly un-aesthetic in terms of the whole thing that we're trying to create and maintain here involving the unique ambiance of Saskatoon Hill Road. And then the last reason is when you go up there, and as I know you have and will in your diligence, we're going to lose a whole bunch of those beautiful sycamore trees, some of which must be close to 100 years old, and we can't put a sidewalk in without losing those trees, we are told by our landscape consultants. By the way, Mr., where is Mr. Bill Kenny did a beautiful landscape plan. He's here tonight, should you have any questions from him. So in summary, we hope in this case sidewalks are often a good thing, but they wouldn't be in character with the neighborhood. They would not have a positive aesthetic benefit. They would detract from what we're trying to maintain here in terms of the historical ambiance of the site, and they would extremely jeopardize and destroy some of these beautiful sycamores. So that was the only code comment that we haven't mirrored in our plans, and we would hope you would not impose.
Are there sidewalks on the road?
No, there are not.
I think so.
And, and so we'd have this sidewalk, you know, from our property line to the end of our property line, just, it, it really would look horrible. And again, the trees are an important thing.
Attorney Fallon?
Yes.
The nine trees shown on the plan, are they existing?
The nine trees shown on the plan, Bill, could you just come forward and answer that?
Six of the nine are existing.
Thank you.
Mr. Corcoran?
Trees in the parking lot. I was looking at the plan, I don't see them shown.
You don't see them shown in the sketch?
I didn't find that.
Oh, you didn't, this drawing?
Right. So you have 10, the, one for every 10 space?
Yes, yes.
There are none on the upper part of the parking lot? Is that because of the views, or?
Yes, it is, the practice green is right there, right up close to the parking lot in that area.
Thank you, Bill. But that is part of your...
Any questions from the commission?
Pardon?
Are all these retaining walls new?
Yes. And, and, and they will all be, you know, constructed in, in compliance with all the provisions of the Building Code regarding these types of items.
Is anything happening with the existing pro shop, or is it being demolished?
Being demolished.
What about the pro shop's septic system? Is that also being abandoned?
Yes.
So that's going to tie into the sewer as well?
Yes.
And Steve?
In terms of the sewer, are you extending the main, or what exactly are you doing there?
Mark, do you want to just address that so I don't play engineer when I shouldn't?
Mark Lankor, for the record, we are actually, it's, it's gravity up to a crest. We are lower than that point on Saskatoon Hill Road, so we will have a pump station that is going to be on our site, and we're going to have a force main that goes up and connects to that terminus that currently exists about 1,200, from our pump station, about 1,200 feet away. Okay?
Thank you.
Out of curi-, yes, sorry, just a couple, out of curiosity, what's the elevation change there? Are you going up like 15 feet or something?
No, it's much greater than that.
Is it?
It's much greater than that. It's on the, it's on the order between where the pump station is and up the hill. It's on the order of somewhere around 35 feet.
Really? Wow. Okay. And then, I don't know who this is for, but on the paddle tennis court, I'm just curious what the, the part of that beige section, I'm assuming is paths to the court, but then there's like a big rectangle in front of it. What's that?
I have to see what we're...
I'm looking at the, this rendering that you just handed out.
Yeah.
Yeah. Just below, I guess that would technically be like east of the tennis courts. Yeah, what's that, that? What is that?
That's the existing...
Is that like a little?
This existing warming hut.
Is that a parking lot, parking area?
Yeah, it's a paddle, it's a warming hut. There's a small little paddle tennis warming hut that exists there, and that's what this is.
Oh, there's a hut there?
Yeah, it's a little, it's a, it's the paddle tennis warming hut.
Oh, sure, because that's the fall/winter season.
It's still there.
And there's no septic for that? There's no bathroom or anything in there?
No.
Okay. We'll take public comment now, if you'd like to come up. Mr. Fallon, could we move these exhibits out of the way?
Certainly, I'm sorry, Mr. ... Yes, absolutely.
Sorry. Anyone interested in commenting? So, Mr. Fallon, back to you.
Yeah, very quickly, we thank you for your attention. We're, we've got a long and prestigious history at the country called Fairfield. This, I think, application represents a commitment by the club to maintain and improve the quality of our facilities for our existing membership today and in the future. We've tried to respond to member needs, but to do it in the context, as I've said, of a very understated, and we hope you'll agree, aesthetically pleasing design for the new facilities that's going to provide us the type of function in that clubhouse that we've needed for a long time. There's significant environmental benefits, as you've heard, and as the WPCA and the Inland Wetlands Agency has found, and we hope you will agree, this is a good application for a long-time, important club here in, in the community, and, and one that has serviced its neighborhood very well, and it's indicative from this application of that sensitivity. So we hope you approve the application.
Thank you. That closes this part of the public hearing.
The next item on the agenda is items, are items two, three, and four, I'll call them together, they're all related, the zoning regulation amendments, application of the Fairfield Housing Corporation to amend the designed residence district regulations, sections, various subsections, Section 10, 28, and 31. Also, 980 High Street, application of the Fairfield Housing Corporation to establish a designed residence district on land presently zoned Residence B. And lastly, 980 High Street zoning compliance application of the Fairfield Housing Corporation pertaining to a 40-unit affordable housing development pursuant to Section 830G of the Connecticut General statutes.
So we have a verified petition to intervene that's been just delivered. Are you aware of this?
Mr. Green, Mr. Green did give me a copy, yes, Mr. Chairman.
Got it. Okay, very good. All right. So it's to establish legal standing and proceeding as a, as a party.
Correct.
I don't know that, well, I'll ask Mr. Leclerc to make his, his application and remarks, and he can treat this as he, as he wishes.
I, I will review it and comment, you know, perhaps the next hearing when we wrap this up. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, I'm Brian Leclerc. It's my pleasure to represent the Fairfield Housing Corporation this evening. As you may be aware, the Fairfield Housing Corporation is a tax-exempt corporation pursuant to Section 501(c)(3) of the U.S. Internal Revenue Code. The Fairfield Housing Corporation has one owner, a single owner, the Fairfield Housing Authority. The Fairfield Housing Authority is a body corporate and a body politic, and it was created pursuant to the Connecticut General statutes, and as such, it is the housing authority for the Town of Fairfield, Connecticut, under Section 840, a sec of the statutes. And pursuant to Connecticut General Statute, Section 840, the Town Board of Selectment back in January of 1964 created the Fairfield Housing Authority, and it has five commissioners, the authority has five commissioners, all of whom are appointed solely by the first selectman of Fairfield. Of the five commissioners, one must be a member, or a resident, I should say, of one of the Housing Authority properties. The five commissioners all serve without compensation, and the authority receives its funding from the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development, HUD, as well as rental revenues from its properties that it controls. As you know, Fairfield Housing Authority provides direct housing services to residents of our town, and it currently owns and controls several properties. Treefoil Court Apartments, which has 30 rental units, and Pine Tree Apartments, which some of you remember because we just, we're here with a project a couple of years ago renovating that, and that has 50 rental units. The Housing Authority also administers between 70 and 75 rental assistant vouchers for our town. Those are the Section 8 vouchers, and its mission is set forth in the Connecticut General statutes. And it mainly includes addressing the need for affordable housing through the acquisition and development of land for affordable housing, promoting the creation and preservation of housing for low and moderate income persons. And right now, we have a list. We have a little over 100 people, as there'll be testimony on the list for the Housing Authority, and that number would be much, much greater if the list actually was able to ma-, be open, but the Housing Authority cannot keep that list open because of the thousands of people that want to be on the list for Housing Authority properties, and the fact that only a few units will ever become available in every calendar year. Just a couple of percentages, a single-digit percent of units will actually become available. And right now, the wait, even with that very restricted list, it's open for very short periods, is still about seven to 10 years to actually get a Housing Authority rental unit in the Town of Fairfield. The Housing Corporation, again, with its one member, the Housing Authority, acquired real estate at 980 High Street back in December of last year, 2018, for $2.1 million, following considerable interest by private developers bidding on the property as well. And I'm sure those private developers would be here as well with an 830G application under the statutes, seeking something much different. But the Housing Corporation was the successful bidder, and they purchased the property for this development, for housing development for residents, specifically 40 rental units. That's what you'll see in the drawings. And you have a hard copy of the drawings from back in August when we filed them. You also have a memory stick in front of you. I, I know from my experience here that a lot of you like laptops and other devices. All the documents that have been submitted or that will be submitted are on the memory stick, the zip flash drive if you want to put it in your laptops, to make it easier looking at things and blowing up drawings bigger. So that's what's on the memory stick you all have in front of you. Of the 40 units, six are going to be three-bedroom, 18 will be one-bedroom, and 16 will be two-bedroom units. Again, 6-3, 18-1, 16-2, the vast majority of which will be affordable. Not just 30%, like you would see under 830G in a set-aside development, many more, a much higher percentage will be affordable, because that's the mission of the authority that Carol Martin will speak about. And this is going to be very similar to our extremely successful Pine Tree project, which is walking distance right behind this school that we recently completed. Pine Tree has even more units. It has 50 units over there, 41-bedroom and 10-two-bedroom units. It's not the intention for the authority or the corporation to sell any of these units. It does not sell its units. It rents its units out. It doesn't flip projects. It gets approvals, it builds projects, and it runs projects like it does with Pine Tree and Treefoil. And this property will, will be maintained as a Town of Fairfield Housing Authority property. It's not going to be flipped over to a private developer. Again, there's great needs for these types of units in Fairfield, something we need to establish tonight, for our seniors who want to remain in town when they can't afford their homes anymore or live in their homes, for those that have become disabled, for the families we have that are broken by death or divorce, and the spouse can't afford the family home anymore, for single individuals who are starting out and want to live in Fairfield where they grew up or where their families are. That's who the residents are already on Pine Tree and Treefoil, and that's who the residents are going to be on High Street. And again, it has the waiting list that grows continually. We could have built this 100 times bigger, and there still would be a demand that the Housing Authority could never satisfy for these. We've put together a team from day one, right after the acquisition, of very highly respected individuals who know how to design affordable housing projects for communities like this, who are experienced in civil matters, environmental matters, and soil and wetland matters, and who've worked with us on other projects. It's a very select team. It's not just low bidders that are given the job to save money. This is a very great and qualified team. And we're proceeding under Section 830G of the Connecticut General Statutes, something you're all familiar with, for two things, an amendment of Section 10 of the zoning regs, which apply to designed residence districts, and a map amendment to put this piece of land in a designed residence district. That's what Pine Tree is right now. It sits in a DRD, Design Residence District, and we amended the regs to apply to Pine Tree. We're doing the same thing here. This property would be moved into a DRD with the text of the regulations changed, so this would become a conforming property. And I could talk more about that later, why we're proceeding that way, to make this a conforming property as opposed to instantly a pre-existing, non-conforming property, which we could do by just asking for approval. But that's not something we should do that's proper under your regs, or in fact, for the investors, given the complex nature of the financing, you don't want to create pre-existing, non-conforming properties. By moving this into a DRD and making a few tweaks to the regs, this becomes a conforming property in the event of a future catastrophe, worst-case scenario. And as you know, the purpose of a DRD is for projects just like this. And I quote, "It's to provide flexibility in site design and housing construction, which will provide a variety of housing opportunities, including the encouragement of elderly and affordable housing." And this affordable housing development will be in compliance with the proposed regs we've sent to you, as well as 830G, as well as the federal HUD regulations and statutes as well. Some of you are familiar with the site. It's over on 980 High Street on the east side. It's 2.4-plus acres, and it's historically been used for farmland, one residential dwelling, an old farmhouse, and several outbuildings. Again, we're proposing 40 units and seven buildings. Six of those will be residential housing buildings, as you'll see from Mr. Bailey's design in a minute. The seventh is going to be the farmhouse. The farmhouse is being preserved, and it's going to be used as a community center, just like at Pine Tree. If you go over there, and I encourage you to take a look at Pine Tree, how that came out, there's a community building at Pine out, there's a community building at Pine Tree when you come in, as well on the left side, where residents can go, there's a patio area with picnic tables and a large open room, you know, probably quarter the size of this, for people to get together if they want to sit down and watch the Yankee game tonight, which I don't know how they're doing, I don't want to know, but... Spoiler. For people to get together for activities like that on the TV, or just to cook a community meal together with the residents, because this really is a community that's being created and was created. Based upon the experience at our other Housing Authority projects and properties, we expect the residents will be exactly the same on High Street as they are on Pine Tree. You're familiar with the town's Affordable Housing Plan, something that's been submitted in the record, it was back in 2013, it was commissioned by our Board of Selectmen, the Town of Fairfield Affordable Housing Plan. And our selectmen noted back in 2013, quote, "There's an ongoing need for affordable housing in Fairfield, and that we need to work proactively to meet the needs of our residents with regard to this affordable housing." The selectmen recognized this. The plan was adopted by the Affordable Housing Committee in 2014, after much public input, meetings, and workshops involving people in our community. And it confirmed our public policies at town that we need safe, quality, affordable housing. The plan noted in its letter to the residents that was submitted with the plan, that over the past 25 years, our need in Fairfield for affordable housing has increased, and that the demand for additional housing choices has grown much more significant. Here's a few portions of that report. It said, "This is a need in our community that we have to satisfy. We need to be proactive as a community to satisfy the need for affordable housing. Public-private partnerships are a solution." And the town really needs choices for our elderly residents who want to stay in Fairfield, who are unable to do that, as well as for younger people, for single people, single parents, and our town employees, who you'll see in a moment actually qualify for affordable housing. You know, some people think this is low-income housing, and you get people that have virtually no money, that are penniless. That's not how it works under 830-G, as I think many of you know. You use income limits, you look at those guidelines, and you'll see in a moment that the people that qualify for this, you'd be surprised who qualifies for these units and who ends up living in these units. The report speaks about town employees, new hires for our town who qualify for these units, that we have no housing for these police officers and teachers to live in our own communities. And it talks about diversifying our housing options for people. It's a very well-thought-out plan, and that's why we have it in the record, the consolidated plan 2015 to 19 for you to look at, and it needs to be part of the record. And we've been asked by the Affordable Housing Committee in the past, and when we went to Pine Tree, I remember this vividly, they asked, "Why aren't you building bigger projects in Fairfield Housing Authority? Why didn't you come with Pine Tree, you made it a little bigger? Why aren't you building more of these and bigger housing projects? There's such a need. It's in our report the selectmen commissioned. We got a problem here." And, you know, "Go out there and do that Housing Authority." And, you know, "Why aren't you making these bigger, adding more floors, buying sites up for these properties?" Well, this development could have been a lot bigger, under 830-G, as a private developer would have built, but it was designed with our team, as you'll hear, to fit into this area, and to be somewhere where the residents will be proud to live, and it will make a nice community. You know, our client has a goal, and it's done with Pine Tree and its other projects, to try to fit into the neighborhood, and it's very dedicated to proceed with this project, and that's why it hired the team to design this and all aspects of this, from the drainage to the environmental issues to the buildings themselves. And that's the goal of the authority, which I think you'll see in a few moments has been accomplished, with quality materials and quality conveniences. These are unique, because if you walked into Pine Tree, or you walked into this when it's built, you're not going to know whether I'm living in an affordable unit or a market-rate unit. You can't tell the difference, they're identical, same fits, same finishes, same windows, floor, appliances, sizes, they're all equal. So no one says, "Oh, that ugly little tiny thing with the cheap cabinets must be affordable." That's not how it works. They're all the same in these units, and we roll them out equally. They're going to be ample parking, they're going to have fire suppression systems, sprinkler systems in these buildings to protect people. No restricted parking for certain people, other than handicapped, everyone gets to park where they want to park, those that have cars. And that's part of a long design over many months. The Housing Authority didn't come with the Housing Corporation and said, "We want this." No, the team got hired, they sat down, and they brainstormed, as you'll see from the code review, with the building department, with conservation, with sewer, with police, with fire, to come up with, with engineering to come up with this design. Something that fits in and that works. We of course have Carol Martin here today. I'm going to begin with Carol, she's the Executive Director of the Fairfield Housing Authority. And I'm going to call up Carol to introduce herself, most of you know her, to tell you a little bit about the developer, Fairfield Housing Corporation, its principals and officers and designees, and then a little bit about the need for this project in the town of Fairfield. Carol?
For the record, Carol Martin, I'm Executive Director of the Fairfield Housing Authority, as well as manager of our nonprofit corporation, Fairfield Housing Corp., who's the applicant. And I just want to start off by thanking this commission for the support. You know, we did something very special at Pine Tree, we expanded affordable housing, created market-rate units, and, you know, we could not have done it without your support. So I just, on behalf of the Housing Authority and the applicant, want to say thank you. So there's a good story here, and I think you folks probably want a soundbite or two of it, but when we built out Pine Tree, we were able to earn developer fees, which we then capitalized, a corp, a nonprofit corp, which we used to purchase the property at 980 High Street. The reason I want to tell you this story is that most of the undeveloped parcels in the past 10 years have gone to for-profit entities and private builders. And, you know, we've, I think, have a large stock of single-family homes. What we're missing, and I think you folks know this as you drive around and talk to your friends, and your children actually, we're missing affordable rental housing, and also accessible rental housing. We don't have a lot of that type of housing stock, and so our diversity is really limited, and it's harming the town. It's harming the town, and the town of Fairfield obviously is not the only community facing this. There are many of the suburbs in Fairfield County that are in an equal affordable housing crisis. So when this party, when this land became available, we did compete for it, and we were successful in attaining it. And the reason I'm proud to say that is, for those of you on the commission that have heard many 830-G applications, you primarily hear an application that is known as a set-aside development, which only requires 30% affordable. Tonight, you will see our project, 40 units, and 70% of those units will be affordable. So we've actually, we're upside down on the math with the amount of affordability. Obviously, we're also committed to making the asset and the property sustainable, so there has to be economic diversity, and I think, you know, myself and our team have achieved that tonight. And then one final thing, we just recently, in June, opened up our Pine Tree and Treefoil waitlist. Together, there's 80 units between the two sites, 50 at Pine Tree, 30 at Treefoil. We had over 1,000 applications, and we only had the waitlist open for 30 days. So we did have to cap the waitlist, obviously we can't take 1,000 applications, so we took 150 for Pine Tree, and we accepted 100 for Treefoil. To be perfectly honest with you, we get a turnover, maybe two or three units a year, so you can do the math, you're waiting a really long period of time to get accessible, affordable, quality housing in the town. So thank you.
Hey Carol, could you just talk a little bit about, for the record, some of the things we have to cover? We have to cover some different things than you've heard in the past, because the town now has, through the Affordable Housing Committee, some suggested model affordability plan language that they just came out with, things that they would like to see in the affordability plans that are presented, and things they would like to see presented to this commission. So we have to, that's why it's a little bit different, some of the stuff we have to talk about.
Okay, thank you. And in that context, we got a letter from the, from Mark Barnhart...
Correct.
...that reviewed certain aspects of the proposed plan, and certain of those review points were critical of the plan as proposed, and identified some missing pieces.
And we just got that from Mark today, we had already revised the plan, we just found out frankly, that the, they did not go to the Housing Authority or publish this little revisions to the plans at all, the Affordable Housing Committee just came up with that, apparently.
Okay.
So we talked to Mark today about it, and we already had changes in the works for it, had a nice conversation, we've addressed everything he needs. We explained that this is not a set-aside, but it's an affordable development, there's two ways you can go under 830-G of this, because we're not just setting aside 30%, we're doing it differently, much differently under 830-G.
Okay.
So we did talk to Mark Barnhart, for the record, our community and economic development chairman, and that's why you have a new affordability plan today that we've submitted. In the past, we've submitted plans, and if you had any proposed changes, or Mark did, or Jim did, we've made them as a condition of approval. But we're just going to coordinate with Mark for the next time to see if he has any further changes.
Thank you. And then the revision to the affordable plan, is the document that's on the stick that you submitted?
They're both.
They're both?
For convenience, I both put it on the stick, as well as you have a hard copy, because you've not seen that in hard copy, so...
That's, yeah, that's my point, that's why...
I did it both ways for you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, so...
Yeah, I had them...
There may be a hard copy that hasn't been distributed to us yet, and...
There's a hard copy floating, but it's also on your stick under Town of Fairfield subfolder.
Yep, affordability plan?
Excuse me, affordability plan, yes. I tried to, we tried to organize them, you have some from the LEP, the Licensed Environmental Professional, the Phase One Soil Management Plan.
Yep.
You have one from the Soil and Water, Mr. Kenny, Soil and Water Expert.
Right.
You have one from the Civil Engineer. You have one, we did peer reviews, which you'll hear in a minute, very unusual, we did two peer reviews, engineering and soil and water. We hired outside consultants to double-check what our experts were telling us, and their reports are on there as well, as well as the town code review and all the other stuff.
Very good, yeah, I was looking through that, but now it's, I think, more clear to us where to find the materials on the Affordable Housing Plan.
Is this current version?
No.
The one, I mean?
No. So this is, the one in our packet is July, the one on the stick is October.
Correct.
So...
October's the one you just... The affordability plan is dated, they said October 2019.
Use the mic.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, the affordability plan that we submitted today, we got comments today from Mr. Barnhart, this afternoon, we immediately made, spoke to him, made those few changes, and now we have it labeled October 2019 instead of July or August when it was first submitted.
Very good, thank you. So you have it on the stick...
It's on the stick, and I have hard copies as well.
I'm looking at it simply because I have my computer today, but it hasn't been distributed in a hard copy yet.
And I have some copies, I'll make sure we do, but I have them with me.
Thank you.
And again, but because of the new proposed sample model affordability plan that Mr. Barnhart's referencing, and some of it applies to this, some of it doesn't, and we've been discussing that, that some of the provisions are good, but they don't exactly follow the HUD guidelines 100% as it applies to this project or 830-G, so we're having that dialogue with him, trying to help him as professionals, how that, what that plan should look like. And it's good to have a uniform plan, it's important that, you know, that developers don't just submit willy-nilly, a plan that never works, you see those problems all the time, plans that are just not proper under 830-G. But some of the things that they also would like us to discuss on the record and in the plan, we're going to do now, just to satisfy Mr. Barnhart and the Affordable Housing Committee, and one is, if you can just let us know the principals and officers of the corporation and the authority, Carol.
So the Fairfield Housing Authority Board of Commissioners are Carol Landsman, John Madio, Maureen Delaney, Rita Waterman, and Jim Kelly. And when we set up the 501(c)(3) court, two of the commissioners of the Housing Authority sit on the corp's board, Carol Landsman and Rita Waterman. The third director of the corp is Jerry Stulman.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but none of the officers of the corporation are compensated in any way for their activities, correct?
Complete volunteers.
And has the corporation filed a CHFA, CHFA, DECD, or DOH application, or any other applications yet in connection with this project or this development?
Not yet, we need obviously land use approval.
And then once these applications will be filed, once that is done, correct?
Correct.
And can you explain briefly the nature of the financing, how this is done in this project? It's very complex, and it's a unique way of financing these that HUD does, supposed to the government just giving you money under these. I'll have Ms. Martin explain a little bit how this is actually financed under the law right now.
Sure, so the Low Income Housing Tax Credit Program, I think you folks might have remembered, we had a little bit of a dialogue about that when we built out Pine Tree. But the Low Income Housing Tax Credit Program is a federal program, it's been around since 1986, and basically, we take corporations that are seeking tax shelters, we sell the credits in exchange for equity upfront, and then over the next 10 years, these corporations, we give them what's called a Schedule K, and that allows them to file their corporate tax returns and gives them tax shelter. So it's a great way for, you know, large corporations who are looking for tax shelter to do some good with their equity. And that's what we're certainly targeting as our primary financing for this project.
It's basically a way that the government, IRS and HUD, rather than the government funding these directly, provides incentives to private corporations, high wealth, high income, high net corporations or individuals, to take their money, tax sheltered, if you will, so the government doesn't have to write checks for affordable housing projects around the country, but lets people get the benefit of it with private financing. That being said, it still is owned by the corporation, the Housing Corporation, and it will control this, it's not getting flipped, it's not going away, it's not going to get switched to anything else at any time for decades and decades in our lifetimes. And Carol, we talked a little bit about the consolidated plan from 2015 to 2019, could you talk a little bit about the findings and the affordable housing need in Fairfield, something else the commission would like you to address as well, the Affordable Housing Committee, rather?
Sure. So I think, first of all, Mark Barnhart gets, and his staff get, a tremendous amount of credit for creating the consolidated plan, and much of the, many of the goals, including affordability and the placement of affordable housing, is addressed in the consolidated plan. And this certainly, this project obviously would help the town when they report back to HUD on the consolidated plan, this certainly would be something that they could report back to as, you know, a success in meeting the goals of the plan.
Carol, could you talk a little bit about the goals of the plan with regard to where affordable housing is placed within our community and communities in general, i.e. portions of town bumped up against its neighboring cities or against the highways?
Sure, so the plan obviously is not to concentrate low or moderate-income folks all in the same area, so the consolidated plan actually highlights where best. Tonight, you folks, very timely, were considering the TOD plan, but the consolidated plan obviously talks to accessibility, transportation, you know, not placing apartments all at 25 or 50% of area median income in one particular tractor neighborhood. Basically, you know, the goal has been and will continue to be of HUD, to deconcentrate poverty, and it's only because we know HUD for the first, I don't know, 60s and 70s, were building these projects that they're now trying obviously to build themselves out of. So, long and short of it is, you know, that's why this project, and hopefully future projects that my nonprofit corp, we are always out actively looking for sites that would help the town demonstrate to HUD that, you know, we are serious about creating affordable housing and doing it within the goals of the federal government.
And Carol, under this development, under the Low Income Housing Tax Credit Program, does that require that all units are constructed and treated equally?
Right, so the allocating agency for these tax credits, every state has an allocating agency, and in this state, it's the Connecticut Housing Finance Authority. They're the authority or agency that allocates these credits, and so they have a bunch of, let's call them standards and regulations. And so the stuff that we are typically constructing is at a much higher level than the private market, much of the stuff that we do goes above just basic building codes, and this is because the investors require these projects and these assets to be sustainable. So in light of when we go out to construct, we're not able to say, "Well, we're not going to use vinyl siding on this building, or we're going to use hardy plank on this building, or we're going to use brick." All of the units pretty much, all have to be built to the same standards.
And Carol, are all the units market-rate or price-restricted, identical inside and out, the appliances, the air conditioning, all the amenities that you have as well?
Absolutely.
And Carol, you have not specified the final finishes on these buildings, obviously, but once you do, they'll all be the same, along with the highest quality of construction standards available. And that's what you did in Pine Tree, is that all, is that correct?
That's correct, and just so you folks understand, we're responsible in our budget to actually source... And just so you folks understand, we're responsible in our budget to actually source construction contingency, and that is contained in what's called eligible basis. And what that means to a tax credit investor is, if we spend not only what we're proposing to spend, but also spend the construction contingency, we actually get more equity into the deal. So in the case of Pine Tree, the reason I'm telling you this is, in the case of Pine Tree, you know, we started out with finishes that weren't really good, but we were actually able to upgrade because we had contingency left over.
And at this point, the affordable units will be interspersed equally throughout all those six buildings, is that correct?
As the math would have it, yes.
Are the entrances to any of the proposed six buildings, to the individual units, or the parking for any of the buildings in the development, in any way different between market rate and affordable?
No, they're all the same.
Again, question for you.
I'm sorry, point of order, this is not the time for you to ask questions.
Do you and Carol work together? I mean, is it like, do you and Carol, is she...
No, she's a witness for the applicant. The applicant is entitled to call witnesses and examine those witnesses. Any other party, like the interveners, are entitled to cross-examine those witnesses. Members of the public are permitted to speak after the applicant makes their presentation, okay? Thank you, please proceed.
I had a question, yeah. What percentage is affordable? Because I heard 70, but in the statement here, it says I see 80.
So the original, this gets back to the explanation I think Brian was trying to, we took the model plan and put it into our underwriting. And so when we did that, we haven't changed our underwriting, but in order to comply with the lower of Bridgeport HMFA and state area median income, it's state area median income in most places in Fairfield County. So although our rent structure and our incomes aren't changing, in order to meet the affordability plan, we had to rely on state area median income. Piances are, I mean, this is obviously a snapshot in time, you folks know these incomes change annually. Chances are, we'll have more than 70%, and that's why we wrote a minimum of 70%.
Okay, but 70 now, okay.
We had a minimum of 70.
Man, I understand, yeah.
Commissioner Corcoran.
Yeah, I'd like to continue on that. Why aren't you at 100%?
The Connecticut Housing Finance Authority has an application process, and it's 9%. Application is competitive. They, you get extra points in your app if you do some market rate units. So you actually get extra points, and it makes the application more competitive.
So did I hear you say that you're not using the Bridgeport area incomes, you're using statewide incomes?
In order to comply with 830G, we have to use the lesser. So in this case, for this project at this time, it would be state area median income. For the tax credit program, when we income qualify, we would be using the Bridgeport HMFA.
So in 830G refers to 30%, and they have a distribution of 80%, 60%, 40%. How are you applying that, that distribution to the 70% you're proposing?
Hang on one second.
I think part of the answer is the state median income levels are lower than the Bridgeport numbers, the numbers. That's why we have to apply the state under 830G, because that's a lower qualifying number. And Carol explained, 830G is minimum of 30%, and of the 30, you do your 15 and 15. This is different because that's a set-aside development. This is an assisted housing because we're taking federal monies for it, so we're going above the 30%. Private developer would come in with a 30%, 15, 15, 15 at 60, 50 at 80, and a total of 30% of the units. This is different because it's coming in 70% affordable, much more affordable than you would do if it was a set-aside development.
Yeah, so my question was, if you were doing a 30% set-aside, or maybe that's the wrong word, I thought that they were...
That's the right...
So they were, that 30% is divided up between 80%, 60%, and 40%. And I was wondering how you were applying that, are you going to do a third, a third, a third, or are you just doing that for the 30%?
No, no, it's a great question. I think, actually, Brian and I had a conversation today, so I could get it more clear in both of our minds. So you're absolutely right, the set-aside developments are 30% affordable units, and half of those, 15%, have to be at 80, and 15% have to be at 60. In this particular case, I just wanted to get our numbers because I didn't have them memorized. In this particular case, we're going to have three units at 80%, 16 units at 60, 10 at 40. And so when you're calculating housing unit equivalency points, this project will generate a lot more points than any of your 830G apps.
If it were, are there 30% of the units that meet the 830G requirements?
In what we're proposing?
Yeah. I mean, I understand you're doing more than 30%, but if you, if you were looking at a 30% sample, not a sample, but a selected 30%, would you see the 830G distribution?
Right. No, you wouldn't. The difference is that we go to a deeper income, we go to 40% of state area median income. You don't see those income levels in an 830G set-aside application. So I guess what I'm trying to explain to you is that the affordability is more diverse than you would see in an 830G application. We don't have 15%.
To be fair, this is an 830G application. You're talking about a set-aside, under, right, okay?
Correct, Chairman, sorry.
So this is an assisted facility, which means that you need to designate more units at more diverse income levels, right?
Well, the assisted development really is defined by your financing structure, but I guess the point I was trying to make, and I obviously didn't do it too good, so my apologies, is that when you're doing a set-aside 830G application, you only have 80 and 60. In this development, you actually are going to have 80, 60, and 40.
Right.
I thought we were seeing that all the time, 80, 60, 40.
No, what you're, just to clarify, because it's an assisted, we don't, it's not, it's not 30%. You know, under 830G as a set-aside, it has to be the 30% set-aside, 70% market rate, and you use the 80% of that median, mean income number as the calculating number. You have to use 80% of the numbers I'll talk about in a minute. How this is different, we don't look at 80%. You know, we have only three of the units proposed at 80% income, over families at 80% or individuals. We have 16 of the families at 60%, something you'd never do at an 830G set-aside, but you can do in, under the portion of 830G that we are using. Also, we have 10 of the units with incomes of only 40% of that number. So it's half of what the state would normally look at at a private developer doing an 830G. So we bring the income numbers way down. So people that qualify, you're going to get those elderly and those people that just don't have, because you'll see how high 80% is.
Yeah, I mean, a private developer could do that, too.
They could, but typically, they could, but typically, you're not going to see that in our experience because of the nature of the entity.
Yeah, but you're making some pretty grand statements about what private developers could do or would do, or, and can do, as opposed to what the Fairfield Housing Corporation is doing. And I think it's a little unfair. Private developers could take advantage of these tax incentives just the same way that the housing corporation has as well. And it's, I don't think, appropriate to say that this is why it's different from what a private developer would do.
I think we've never, my point is, we've not seen one. I don't remember ever seeing one like this with a private developer.
That may be the case, but I think it's disingenuous for you to suggest that what a private developer can or would do as opposed to. So just, let's stick with what your, what your proposal is, and how you have chosen to avail yourselves of the tax incentives and the financing plans and the way that this is structured, as opposed to trying to compare it to what would or should be if it was any other 830G.
Well, fair enough, but you, the point I'm trying to make is most, you have to remember it's different, and just to, so the commission understands with the 80%, 60, 40, it looks like a much different animal when you crunch the numbers at the units, and that's what we're trying to get across, that you're not going to look at the 30%.
Well, you can explain that without suggesting that's why it's different from what a private developer would do.
Sure.
Okay?
So are there any more questions on the 60, 80, 60, 40 composition of how that works under the 830, a set-aside versus the affordable? Thank you. So again, we have 40 units of this, which is 20% less than Pine Tree, I've given you the breakup of the units. All of the residential units we're proposing are two stories plus a space on the roof line or on the roof with dormers, as you'll see in a minute. The existing farmhouse building is going to be the common area, an office common area for the residents. It's going to be kept as the face of the site on High Street. When you're coming up, you'll see the street lines, what that's going to look like. It's going to be extensively remodeled because it needs to be, given the condition it's in, but it's going to be looking the same. And Mr. Bailey, Paul Bailey's going to talk about that in just a moment. And again, we've defined the affordable at a minimum of 40 years. Right now, it's 40 years in the plan. They're all going to be rental units. And our team, that you'll be seeing now, is going to be Paul Bailey, the architect, Ryan Baker, the professional engineer, Bill Kenny, our soil scientist, Chris Allen, he did a professional engineering peer review, Chris DeAngelis, he did a soil science peer review, and Jay Soltis, a licensed environmental professional under the state statutes. We talked about the numbers, and just to get them in the record, as of 2019, the applicable state median income for a family of four in Fairfield, the number we use is $100,400. That's, the state median income is the index which is applicable and which has to be used to calculate the maximum rental of an affordable unit if it was built and rented today. As Carol Martin indicated, there is some flexibility because those will change on a yearly basis, both in the Bridgeport and the statewide level. And those numbers are, you know, show up in the affordability plan, and if you want to really dig in the weeds in the plan, you'll see an example of what you do with that number, how you calculate that number to come up with what the rent is for the unit, because that's how you derive the rents for these units. They're not flat rents, you have to use the income of the folks to come up with that.
So this is on page seven of the plan?
It's, I don't have the exact page, but yes, Mr. Chairman, it's in the plan.
Could you give us those numbers for families of three, two, and one?
I am, and one second, I was just getting there. I knew, I knew you were going to ask that question. And the number you have, for instance, for an individual, 80% is $52,850. For a family of two is $60,400. For a family of, the 80% number, I'm sorry, for a family of three, the 80% is $67,950.
Where are you now? This is not page seven, this is not the 104th, 100,000.
No, you have to take that number and bring it down to the 80% of that number. That's, that's the full number. So basically, the number, you know, when you break, when you do the math, the family of two is $60,400, family of three is $67,950, family of four is $75,500. So those are the numbers we have to look at. And again, those are, make a lot of individuals, a number of individuals who work for the town or the Board of Ed qualify with their families for affordable housing, not to mention our kids getting out of college, a lot of elderly people with fixed incomes. And we have people in the tax collector, the clerk's office, starting out at $55,000 and change in their salary, public works laborers starting in the 40s, $45,000, police officers in the 60s, teachers in the 40s. So that's why those numbers are very relevant. And what's, the other thing you can't forget, and there's two interesting pieces of information here, one is the points, and as you know, you've been educated about these, Mr. Chairman.
Thanks. Just before you move away from those numbers, because those are important, and in looking through the plan, I found the example where you started with the median income of $100,400, and then there's a calculation which adjusts for 75% of that and 60. And so can you just explain to us how this example fits into the determination of...
I'll, Carol, explain that as an example, and how that's somewhat of a moving example and target of the plan.
That would be helpful, because I...
It's very confusing, you're right, Mr. Chairman. It's extremely confusing.
You know, you went through another scenario, which takes the 80% and so forth, and that's, I didn't see that one as an example in the plan.
That's why I take the median income, median income, really. Carol, we'll walk you through how you actually do a calculation when you're ready to.
Again, for the record, Carol Martin, chairman, and members, obviously. So when we went back and revised our affordability plan, obviously, to meet the model that the Affordable Housing Committee had established, which, you know, certainly is really, really good work, it talks about how you go about calculating rents. And so they had written, a written sample of how to calculate rents, and so what we did was, we not only had a written sample, we actually, and this is under Roman numeral nine, we actually also showed the math example about how we would go about calculating a rent. And so when you start with area median income, obviously, it's typically, when we talk about area median income, we're talking about a four-person household, but you folks know we have one-person households, you know, two-person households, three-person households. So what the plan does is try to guide you on how to go about calculating the number, but you always start with the area median income, whatever it is at the time that you're leasing up, or initial occupancy. So the number today is $100,400. You know, these are updated annually. So once you, once you obviously take the $100,400, in this particular case, the example is a 60% unit with a household of one and a half people.
Yeah, why do you use one and a half people?
Well, that's a good question. So depending on the bedroom size will affect, like a one person in a one-bedroom versus a one person in a two-bedroom, you could get a one and a half household. And the reason that you do that is your rent is going to be higher, so what you adjust for is the .5 person that's really probably not there.
So you would, you would rent a two-bedroom affordable housing unit to one, to a single person?
Right, just like you could rent a three-bedroom unit, excuse me, a two-bedroom unit to a three-person household. So this is a way to adjust for the household income size, to adjust for the rent. So in this particular example, and I actually think the Affordable Housing Committee did a good job explaining it, if you go to the bottom, well, I know you're on your laptop, sorry, if you go to number of persons in a family, it's under Roman numeral nine, you'll see where they've laid it out, percentage adjustments per base, and it talks about how to adjust your family size. So if a family size involves a half person, such as a 4.5 person, shall be calculated by taking the midpoint between the relevant figures above and below the half. For example, the adjustment for a 4.5 household is 104%.
Yeah, I saw that, I just didn't, and that's the first place where...
Because you can have a four-person household in a two-bedroom, you can have a four-person household in a three-bedroom, so it adjusts for the size of the unit.
Okay.
Because the rents, obviously, the more bedrooms you have, the higher the rent is. Does that help?
Yeah, it does. And I hadn't really thought about this before, but it raises the question in my mind as to whether we would be renting a two-bedroom affordable housing unit to a single person, or a four-bed, three-bedroom to two people, or...
Right, so there's occupancy.
Why would we do that? When we're trying to maximize the space, the efficiency of the space.
Right size, yeah, we call that right sizing.
Right sizing, okay.
Yeah, sure. So what happens with both our financing and actually HUD occupancy guidelines, it's not like it's strict, so a one-bedroom can only have one, or a two-bedroom can only have two, or three, or four. So there's occupancy standards. A studio, obviously, or a one-bedroom could only have one or two people in it, you couldn't have three. So there is right sizing, and that's what we do try to do on initial intake. But we don't typically dictate, the applicant will tell us what they're seeking, but if they don't fall within those guidelines, we tell them, obviously, that you can't occupy this unit, you would have to occupy the unit allowable by our occupancy standards.
Right, and that's based on just where they fall in the waiting list? So if a single person came next on the waiting list, and the availability was for a two-bedroom unit...
Right.
They could, they would have the option of taking that unit and being a 1.5 person.
Correct. Yep. And a lot of times, Chairman, I know it sounds very unique, but a lot of times, we have, you know, we have folks that are moving from someplace, and they're looking to, you know, have the two-bedroom space. Many times, they have children that have moved away, that come and stay with them on, you know, a regular basis. So, you know, those are probably the most common ones that I've seen. But most people, you know, that are a single, you know, one-income earner, they're not wanting a two-bedroom unit because the rent's a lot higher.
Very good. Anybody have any questions about all that? Anybody have any questions about all that? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We've had some discussions with Mr. Barnhart, and this unit, assuming it's approved as proposed, and once the CFOs are issued for all of the units in the building, the 40 units, will generate approximately, we've been crunching the number, 61.5 additional points towards that moratorium level that we're looking at. And in talking to Mr. Barnhart as recently as this afternoon, there's a number of projects in the pipeline right now that have been approved as 830Gs, which are eligible for construction and being constructed, or will start construction. If all of the approved projects that we've approved as a community already are built, and as soon as the CFOs are issued, the moment we get the CFOs on this project, we've exceeded the 10% threshold, and the town can't apply for a moratorium. So this will be, given the number of units that are pending, construction pending, but approvals have been granted, not just applications, but granted approvals, plus these units, that will put you over the 10% number. So a moratorium under 830G, which you may be familiar with, or you will be soon enough, I'm sure, if you're not already, because other communities are reaching that level, you can apply as a community, we can apply as a community for that moratorium, because this may be the straw that tips us, or will be the straw that tips us if those are all built. So just have that factored in as well. Again, we've had a code review, that's on your disk, it's in the documents provided. We've been meeting with town departments, our team has been meeting with town departments for some time, with help, building, fire, sewer, conservation, engineering, solid waste and recycling, police economic development, tree warding, and planning and zoning. And, you know, we've gone through a number of changes, we've made some engineering changes, we've met a lot with Laura Pooley and with Annette Jacobson. We've dealt with the fire department on how to access emergency vehicles, much like we did on Pine Tree. We now have a turnaround, a structured turf turnaround, that our experts will talk about to, and the chance that the largest fire truck, we always have to be prepared for the worst, even though it's sprinklered, in the event the largest fire truck the town owns, the biggest hook and ladder we have, should drive all the way into the development, there's a way it could turn around and get right back out again without having to back out. And we have the same thing at Pine Tree, even though they don't typically, typically they back out of Pine Tree, they never use the turnaround we built, but nonetheless, and the fire chief, he wanted a turnaround, so we put the turnaround in, we designed that structure as well. We've designed this so we detain all storms for the two-year through the 100-year storm, so we've complied with that request from engineering to detain those storms on site. We're reducing peak flow for all design storms. There's an elaborate underground detention system. Right now, the rain that falls from the sky hits on the site, it's not detained by anything other than the ground. The engineers are going to talk in a moment, and the soil scientists, about the underground detention systems put in there, because we're using porous pavement, something that I know you're familiar with for other projects. We've gone with porous pavement on a significant portion of the site. We're also improving the quality of the runoff. There's a small wetland area, we're making sure it gets no wetter or no drier than it is right now, we're maintaining the hydrology of that. There's plantings of native shrubs and grasses, the wetlands are not going to be affected. But unlike Pine Tree next door, we're not building in the upland review area, that 90-foot review area that goes, as you know, there's the wetlands, and then there's a 90-foot review area around it. At Pine Tree, we put some structures, actually, we built the entire clubhouse or community center in the upland review area, where it never was before. We haven't done that here. The only thing we have in the upland review area is a tiny section of sidewalk by one of the buildings, the fire truck turnaround, which, yes, sir.
Mm-hmm, when you finish this?
Yeah, which is on porous pavement, a little guardrail, and a stone infiltration bed that engineering wanted in that upland review area.
Great, thanks. So can you just talk for a moment about the fact that your application for a permit at conservation was denied?
It was denied. It was denied, it was published last week.
Yeah.
There will be an appeal taken of that. Concurrent with that, we're going forward with this commission, because in the event there's an approval, obviously, we cannot build, you cannot trump ahead or override conservation, as you know, they cannot override zoning, it's too much, it's two separate tracks, but they run parallel. So if we are denied conservation and approved tonight, we have to wait for conservation and the appeal to resolve before we build. If we are denied by this commission, the appeals go together under the 830G docket, they jump together, and one judge will look at both of these for efficiency's sake, so we don't have to run one track, resolve the appeal, and then start this all over again. And that's what the cases talk about, and that's why, Mr. Chairman, we're going that-
And so if we approve and the appeal is not successful-
Mm-hmm.
-then you need to start all over again with a new proposal at wetlands and then before-
That's correct, Mr. Chairman, correct. Nothing you do tonight can change what happened in wetlands, that's correct. That's a good question. I'm going to call tonight, begin by calling an ex-witness, Paul Bailey, he's our architect, which you may remember from Pine Tree and some other projects. He's principal of a 13-person firm bearing his name, 1972 grad from Yale University School of Architecture, and he's known for, as being a planner for municipalities and for nonprofits, that's what he specializes in, and that's why we brought him in from New Haven on this and on other projects. He's worked on over $100 million of HUD, CHFA, DECD-funded multifamily units, he's been involved in designing 8,000 residential units, and he's gotten a number of awards from the Connecticut Trust, Hartford Preservation Alliance, the Boston Society of Landscape Architects, Connecticut Community Development Association, the AIA Connecticut Design Award, the National Trust, and most significant, he's received the Maxwell Award for Excellence in Affordable Housing. Paul, because of that experience, that's why we've hired Paul Bailey on this project again, to analyze this project with an empty slate. He was brought in with a blank piece of paper to design this, looking at the site, with no preconceived notions of where to go, and analyzed a lot of alternatives to this project. And Pine Tree came out wonderful, something as you drive by, we can all be proud of as a community, looking at how that is today, and looking at how the people live there, and how happy they are, and how it works. So I'm going to call Paul now, and ask if you can just begin by walking us, please, through this design.
Well, I hope I can stand here and point. I'm not planning on moving, but I have an assistant who's going to change the boards, who happens to be a site engineer also. No, I'm stopping there. So, so my name is Paul Bailey, I'm the architect for this project, our office is in New Haven. You, you have all the drawings that we're going to show you tonight, I assume you're just going to look at these, but I can, I can give you the numbers, if that's helpful, if it's a waste of time.
Sure, you can, just recite, you know, in the number of the page that you're making reference to, and-
All right, we're starting on the, on the civil engineer's drawing, it's C, it's a C 1.1. So I'd just like to say, this was a group effort in this design, it's not the architect who goes up on a mountaintop and comes up with this, it was the team working together. But I'm just here to talk about it, so. So I'd like to orient you on this plan, can everybody see? So, so this is the site, north is at the top, this is High Street here, this is Country Road, and this is Oakwood Drive. The wetland, as located in the field by our expert, Mr. Kenny, is there. The 90-foot, 90-foot setback line is coming right through here.
Yes, it might be, I have to do that.
I'm sorry, the 90-foot setback line is right here, and this is the wetland. So I'd like to talk about the goals that we, that we set for this design, and how we achieved them. The first goal was to keep all the buildings and the parking areas out of the wetlands and the 90-foot, and the 90-foot wetland setback. So here are our five buildings, I hate to correct our attorney, but there are five, five buildings plus the, the community building, not six.
I'm sorry.
Well, so here we see the five buildings, and we see the parking area, and the, and the old farmhouse. So the, so the, so the wetland setback line is here, the building at this end is, is not in the wetland setback, the wetland setback is here, and this building is not in the setback, and the parking is not in the setback either. So we were very careful to do that as the first step. The second goal was to save and restore and reuse the existing farmhouse, the Judd Farmhouse, because we believe that it's important to the neighborhood and the town of Fairfield. It would have been easier to tear it down and to have the parking come straight in. If we had done that, we could have gotten more parking on the site, and we could have gotten at least four more units on the site. But I and my client chose not to do that, because we think the historic heritage of this farmhouse is very important, and we think the way that, the way that it blocks the views of the parking lot from, from High Street is also very important. Excuse me, I'm going to have to drink water once in a while. So you probably can't see it in this small version here, but our plan is to keep the original farmhouse, which is the front section, the original wraparound porch, and we're going to tear down the additions in the back, and we're going to add a new, a new community room as an addition in the back, and you'll see more of that later. Our next goal, we're on number three now, was to locate the new buildings so, so all the entrances are in the inside, all the doors are in the inside, to help create a sense of community and a village atmosphere in the center. So I don't know if you can see it from there, but we have porches on the inside of these, of these buildings, the little bumps, if you're looking at the plan. So each of the entrances is a separate, each of the units have a separate entrance, and each has a porch, some of the porches are shared, but, but that's one way that we create a sense of community, to have everybody, to have everybody enter and leave their unit on the inside. So the parking lot driveway is really functioning like a village street in the middle here. And, and this is good for safety and security, because the eyes are on the street from these units. The living spaces are, the living rooms are all on the inside, they're not on the outside, which is good for the neighbors, and it's good for the residents. There's open space between the building, the buildings, it's not one long building, so there's air and light that comes through for both the neighbors and the residents. The fourth goal was to shield the adjacent, the adjacent properties from the parking area, so they wouldn't have to look at cars. So the buildings, the way we have laid them out, shield the neighbors from looking at a parking lot. The fifth goal was to make sure that we had, had safe, had safe access and degress for fire engines and emergency vehicles, so we have, we have worked with our engineers to create a K-turn in the rear for fire engines, which the local fire marshal has approved. I think, I think I can handle the board change myself here.
So this, so this board is the cover sheet of your-
Before, before you get to the next one, Commissioner Corcoran.
It's the cover sheet of the submission.
Thank you.
Right, so I have a question.
I'm sorry.
On the sheet you just had before, if you could turn it back.
Sure.
One of the things that interests me is how close these buildings are to the neighbors' buildings. And on the version we have, the legend for what, for the various hash marks and lines, your version is different. Actually, I would like that version. Mine, the buildings are blocked out, on mine, you can see. You see here where the buildings would be, all your legend is there. I can't see where the-
All the houses next door.
Right.
That's just a different orientation, just flip it over.
Yeah.
You get the drawing upside down.
No, I want to see these houses.
I'm sorry, see, see I did-
See, I guess I did something wrong, it was actually upside down.
I, I think what Commissioner Corcoran is saying-
No, 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 I can't-
Is that there are images of the homes on the bottom, on the bottom of this, right?
Yeah, yes.
But there are no image depict, images, outlines depicting where the homes are located on the top half of that sheet.
Exactly.
Well, I think if you looked at the, at the survey, you would, which is, which is part of the original survey of the property, you would see those houses in.
So they get C 1.1.
Yeah, that's what we have, yeah.
Which one? Yeah, although that's not where they are necessarily today.
They're actually on this drawing, you just can't see them from where you're sitting. If you want to, bring that closer.
No, we have the-
No.
No, no, it's the top house.
It's the top of the north that's talking about the north.
Right.
Okay, because the legends are on the top.
Well, that was the engineer's choice to put the legends up there, but the, but the houses show on the survey, which is part of this, which is part of this package, if you want to see the location of the houses.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Can you, one of the comments in the code review from the police and some other, somewhere else, was that there were concerns about the driveway not lining up with adjacent streets, and I don't know exactly what that was referring to, but it seemed like it was referring to Wilton Road across the way. What was the comment about, and did you make any adjustments for it?
Well, I think our traffic engineer should answer that question, but-
Okay.
We did not adjust it, but we discussed it, and it was agreed that we would leave it in the location that it currently is. I think, I think he was talking about the-
To make it a four-way?
-street over here, Wilton Road.
Yeah, yeah, all right.
But I'm sure our, our traffic engineer can talk about the-
Okay, very good.
And he'll be speaking later.
So this is the last flip. Do you have any other questions?
So, so our next goal was to utilize a unique building type that we've used in, in other sites for affordable housing, we used it in Westport and other towns, and we're, we were just shortlisted for a project in Stratford, where we're using it, in the TOD section of Stratford.
Same design?
What, sorry?
Sorry, that was me, identical?
Well, no, the, it's not identical. No, I wouldn't do that to Carol.
No.
No, it's not identical, it's, it's similar concept in that it's townhouses over flats. So, so this is the, looking from the inside out, at the three buildings on the- So this is the, looking from the inside out, at the three buildings on the north side of the property. So this is the south side of the three buildings. So, and we think this concept would work well on this site also. So each building has eight units. On the first floor are four flats. On the upper two floors are townhouses. Are there another four units that are townhouses? And those are two levels on the upper floor. So each building has eight units. And you can see the variety among the buildings, which I'm going to talk about later. So it's not a flat roof, or it's not a full third floor, which would have a higher roof. The third floor is like an attic with dormers, and that's where the bedrooms are for the townhouses that start on the second floor. So this is helpful to bring down the scale of the buildings and to give them more of a residential feel, and it enhances the village atmosphere. So the building heights, as determined by the definition in your zoning regulations, the heights of these buildings are between thirty feet and thirty feet six inches, which is substantially lower than the allowable height in the existing zone. One other advantage of this configuration is that all the first floor flats can be handicapped accessible. It's not required in the building code to make them all handicapped accessible, but we have an owner here that wants to have them all handicapped accessible. So we will have fifty percent of the units in this development handicapped accessible, whereas the building department only requires ten percent.
All of those going to be on the ground floor, handicapped?
Yes, they have to be on the ground.
Okay.
So the first four flats are what I'm talking about. The townhouses that are on the upper floor are not handicapped accessible, but...
So does that mean you're going to eliminate the porches down on the first floor?
Well, the entrances are all flush, and the porches are flush, they're not elevated. Is that what you're, is that your question?
Yeah, but the drawings show two risers from the ground, so I'm just curious. I'm looking at B1 in particular. The elevations are clear, I see it in the elevation, yeah. I'm planning to make it look like there's two steps, so I'm just curious.
Are you getting ahead of me?
Maybe. Sorry.
That's fine. That's fine, I'll try to speed up. So the floor plans are very similar in these buildings, but as you can see, the styles are very different. They have different siding, they have different colors, the porches are different shapes, the dormers are different shapes. And this was the client's idea, and I think it was a great idea to get some diversity in the development. So we have five buildings, and we have three types, three types that are mixed in. And I like to call this a farmhouse style. And this is in the front, which is next to the historic house. This is, the one in the middle is a Victorian style, there's only one of those. And this is more of a classical style, and we'll look at those later. And I think the variations in styles actually reinforces the village character. It's more like a real village, which would have different houses that look different. So I need a new board now. So now we're going to look at the building plans and to see how the townhouses over flats are laid out. And we're going to look at elevations of all sides of the buildings, the sides that face the neighbors and the sides that face the inside. So this is the smaller building. It's only slightly smaller, but, so this is the first floor here, the second floor is here, the third floor is on a different board, but we'll start here. So there are four units on the first floor here. They're one bedrooms. The entrance is here for each of these units. Each has a little porch, as you can see. There's the entrance there, the entrance here, the entrance here, the entrance here. And you can see these, there's another porch here that has two doors, and those are the doors that go up to the townhouses on the second floor. So once you walk in this door, you're inside your unit. It's not a common stair, it's a private stairway. So there are no common corridors, there are no lobbies. All the square footage in this building is allocated to the units. We have a small sprinkler room here, that's the only, that's the only section that's So as I said, the flat entrances are here, and the entrances to the townhouses are here. We have a very open layout in all of these units. The kitchen, the dining, and the living room are a large room, like a great room. I mean, it's not as big as a lot of great rooms I've seen, but it's the same concept on a smaller scale. So the living rooms are in the front, the bedrooms and the bathrooms are in the back. So the activity is in the front, and the quieter areas are in the back, and I think that's good for the neighbors because the noise and the possibility of having people staring out the window and looking at them, if they're concerned about that, they're going to be sleeping or using the bathroom. So it's not a place you hang out that much. There's a washer dryer hookup in each unit on all floors. So the second floor is the first level of the townhouses. As I said, you walk up the stairs and you end up on the first floor. So here we have a larger living space with a kitchen and a larger living room, because this is a larger unit. Upstairs, there's one that's a three bedroom, and the other three are two bedrooms. So these are the townhouses. We have an island in the kitchen, we have a breakfast room in the back. So this is the typical layout for the townhouses.
What are the dimensions of the square feet of the one, two, and three bedroom?
Oh yeah, I'm sorry, I should have said that. The first four flats, the square foot area is between seven hundred and seventy and eight hundred and twenty-five square feet. The two-bedroom townhouse is, they're between fourteen hundred and fifty and fourteen hundred and ninety-five square feet. These numbers are actually on the plans, but they're very tiny. And the, did I say the three-bedroom townhouse is seventeen hundred and forty square feet? So this is the third floor. Like a regular house, you walk up the steps, and it's the bedrooms. The washer dryer is on the second floor, and the one on the end here has three bedrooms, the others each have, have the two bedrooms, and a bathroom on the third level. So as you can see, these are dormers, and the space is not all used up here, so it's like a half a story. And you can see the roof plan here, you can see all the dormers. All right, so now we're going to look at the elevations. So this is one of the types of the smaller building that we just looked at the floor plans. So this is the Victorian style. You can see the eight doors here and the porches, and you can see how we've emphasized the vertical elements in this to make it look more like a Victorian, with the detailing in the dormers and in the porches, and the colors. There are three colors, which are brighter than the others. And then in the back, in the back section, it's a little quieter, the section that looks at the neighbors, but we've still articulated it with the Victorian details and the different colors. And then the ends are in this section here, but they're not that visible from the street or from the neighbors. And I think the next elevation is on the backside of this. So this is the same building with the same units, but it looks a lot different. So I like to call this the classical style. It's more reserved in appearance, the colors are more muted. It's all clavered siding, whereas the Victorian had some shingle siding also. The forms of the dormers are more classical, the slopes are less steep, and all in all, it makes it stand out as very different from the Victorian next door. I should say, I did say there were no doors in the rear, but this door is into the little sprinkler closet, so I don't want anyone to think that that's a door for the people to walk out of. But again, we have tried to make the backs, we've tried to make them simpler than the fronts, but still attractive for the neighbors. So there's one more of building types I'd like to show. So these are the buildings that are in the front of the development. The section here is the same size as the other buildings, but here we've added a one-story, we've added a one-story extension because we need to have some larger units on the first floor to be handicapped units. So we have a building A and a building C. In this one, it's a three-bedroom, and in the other building, it's a two-bedroom. So we have the handicapped units in that size also. So this, there are two things. The other thing that this does, as you'll see in the elevations, this brings the scale down as it goes to the street and as it sits next to the farmhouse. So it's a smaller scale on this end, you can see the roof there. So the rest of the building is the same. It's townhouses, the entrances of the first floor is a one-bedroom flat, and upstairs are the townhouses. The square footage of this, of the three-bedroom flat is fourteen hundred and ten square feet. So this has a full bath and a half bath, and the three bedrooms, and the open plan that we showed on the other units. The third floor is the same as the other buildings, so I'm not showing you that. So this is the other building, the C building, and this has a two-bedroom unit on the end. So it's a little more open than the three-bedroom. I'll tell you the square feet in a minute. This unit is twelve hundred and ninety square feet. Now we'll look at the elevations. As I said, I like to call this a farmhouse style. It's more natural colors, muted shades of brown with some red accents, and the gables are more like the farmhouse. We still have the porches, the eight entrances, but here you see the difference, there's a lower section here on the street side, and you can see that here on the end. So it brings down the scale as it goes out to High Street. So the last thing is the community building. So looking at the plan, the old house is this section right here. There was a small addition on the back that we're tearing down. The wraparound porch is here, so all that is staying, and it's being restored. So in this level, we have an office, we have a handicapped lab. The old stairway is still there to the second floor. We have a kitchenette and a copier, and then there's a new addition in the back, that's the community room. And we have a new porch entrance on this side, and then we have a handicap ramp that gets the handicap in the whole facility here, and a terrace on the side. And then in the second floor, there's another office, there's some storage, and there's the high ceiling area of the community room. So here we're looking at the elevations. This is the front elevation facing the street, so this will look exactly as it looks now, only it'll be restored, so it'll look better. And you can see on the side, the terrace will have a stone face, and that's a portion of the ramp here. And then the right side is facing the south, so here's the old house and the wraparound porch. Here's the addition at the back, and that's the porch in the back and the rear entry. This is the north side, you can see the old house here again, and the start of the handicap ramp, the four doors that go into the community room. And here you can see it without the ramp and the terrace, you can see the doors. And then in the back, you can see the community room has some large windows that look into the development. But from the front, you really can't see the addition, you'll only see the old house, and that's the intention. So that's the end of my presentation. If you have any questions now, we'd be happy to...
Very good, thank you very much. Does anyone have any questions? Very good, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Paul, I do have a couple of questions for you. The way you've designed these units, have you designed any difference between the market rate and the price-restricted units in terms of size, trim, windows, anything?
No, there's no difference.
Well, he's not determining which are market rate and which are affordable, are you?
The fact is, are all the units, all the one-bedrooms, the same as each other? All the one-bedroom units identical to each other?
Hold on, Mr. Leclerc, I asked a question.
Sure.
You're not determining which units are affordable or market rate, are you?
No, that's flexible.
Okay, thank you.
But they all will serve, they all will serve each use.
And I think I understood your testimony to be that all of the buildings in the plans for the one-bedrooms, two-bedrooms, three-bedrooms were the same.
Mr. Chairman, one matter of housekeeping, I'm not sure, I know Mr. Green has filed those interventions, did you want him to have the opportunity to ask questions of Mr. Bailey now, or wait till we're done with all the witnesses? I don't know what your pleasure is on that.
I hadn't really thought about it. Mr. Green is free to, as I understand it, well, any intervenor, as I understand it, is free to seek to cross-examine the witness at the time of the testimony or during their presentation to recall the witness, to ask them questions at that time. So I don't think he's got a... So I don't think he's got to do it now.
I just wanted, I was just going to inquire if he does, so I don't, did you want to? What's up to you?
Mr. Green, or any other intervenor? There are several here. Mr. Green, are you representing all the intervenors?
I'm representing two intervenors, Alan and Pace. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission staff. Joel Green, all offices of Green and Gross. I have filed two petitions, verified petitions to intervene this evening on behalf of Pace and Alan, and I appreciate the courtesy of counsel, but I will reserve my question-
Yeah, I figured.
-for our investigation. But I thank you.
Thank you. You didn't ask for the other witnesses. But that's beside the point. So I think you've made the point, and you've established for the record that there's been no design differences between the units that are ultimately, well, any of them, one, two, three bedrooms, whatever, they're all designed the same.
Mr. Green, can I have a question on the-
Are you represented by Mr. Green?
Yes.
Then Mr. Green is the one who's to ask the questions, and he just reserved his questioning for his presentation.
Would you like to answer that? Okay.
Okay, well, your attorney can ask that question on cross when he'd like to do that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thanks, Paul. Once our client had the preliminary design, we needed to properly look at, and concurrent with that, look at the engineering and the design of the site where the five residential buildings and the one common building, the old farmhouse, would be sitting. And we retained Brian Baker of Civil One Engineering here in Connecticut. He's a licensed professional engineer doing this for over 20 years. And he also holds his CPESC and his CPSQW, Accreditations for Proficiency in Erosion and Sediment Control and Stormwater Management. Again, he's with Civil One Engineering. He's going to testify in a second about meeting with the town staff regarding his drawings and making modifications as we've gone along, and talking about the incorporation of a number of design features into the drawings and the plans to preserve the on-site wetland, about the porous technology on the pavement, dealing with the longstanding surface flows onto neighboring properties from this site for hundreds of years, dealing with the storm flows from the site that have been existing for hundreds of years, dealing with the drainage into High Street, and retaining the 10-year storm, which is significant, being able to detain a 10-year storm post-development at the same rate as a two-year pre-development storm. So we're able to take a two-year storm right now, a storm that arguably would happen every two years, and detain that at the same, a 10-year storm at that same rate. So a much bigger storm after development, we're detaining more water. And he will explain that, Brian will explain that. And so if you could just come up and present your plan and talk a little bit about those, everything from the wetlands to the design.
As Attorney Leclerc said, Brian Baker with Civil One, a licensed engineer in the state of Connecticut, and we prepared the site plans for the applicant. Just to take a step back, I'm going to show you the existing conditions mapping, which is a survey that was provided to us by FLID and SEER, licensed surveyors. They had located, field-located the wetlands in the southeast corner of the property that were flagged by Mr. Kenny. You can see the existing farmhouse, and there is an existing barn and some outbuildings up towards the front of the property. The majority of the property, three-quarters of it, is open meadow at this point. You can see, we had all the trees located in the back, adjacent to the wetlands, the tree line. I think it's important to state that we were able to keep our development out of that tree line, so we have some minimal activity within a 90-foot regulated area, but all the existing trees in that area ought to remain and actually be supplemented, which Mr. Kenny will go over a landscaping plan as to how we're going to actually enhance that buffer area post-development. Generally, the site slopes from High Street from west to east towards the wetland area, a relatively gentle slope, three and a half to 4% on the existing grade. The site consists of Charlton soils, which are Type B, they're well-drained soils, so they're suitable for stormwater infiltration technologies, which is what we're proposing for the site. That, along with the gentle slope, and the fact that we don't have any drainage coming on our property from neighboring properties, allows us to really handle our own drainage on our site and infiltrate it back into the ground. So I'll show you what we're doing with the stormwater. So you can refer to Sheet C 1.1, again, this overall site plan. Show you the proposal. So basically what we're doing is all of the impervious surface on the site, all the parking, driveways, buildings, all that is going to be infiltrated into the ground via pervious pavement, drainage system. And then under the pervious pavement, we have 18-inch-deep stone reservoirs that are going to retain the water, infiltrate it. Any high overflows in your 100-year storm or greater, we have overflow pipes that go out to the detention system in High Street. This was a design that we worked closely with, the town engineer, with Mr. Hurley and with Laura Pooley on. They indicated they really liked to see the porous pavement technology, which is also something DEP likes to see. It's also something the University of New Haven Stormwater Research Center is touting now as a great way to deal with post-development stormwater treatment. So will we have-
Question, thank you. So did that change from the application that you presented at Wetlands? Because one of the problems that was noted there at Conservation, I shouldn't say Wetlands, at Conservation, was that proposal increases impervious surfaces over existing, obviously there's a lot more buildings and asphalt. And impervious asphalt are proposed. And I didn't think I recall reading in here that there was pervious-
There's a combination of both.
Combination.
Yeah.
Can you identify where the pervious versus impervious are?
Sure. All the parking stalls themselves, the actual parking spaces, are impervious pavement. The actual driveway, the center line, the center drive is standard asphalt. But what happens is that all pitches from northwest to southeast, so anything that falls on that impervious standard pavement will flow into the pervious parking stalls and into the ground. The stone reservoir I referenced, the 18-inch-deep stone reservoir that we're using for detention, that's under the entire parking system. So under both the pervious and the impervious, so the water will flow through the-
The driveway and the parking spaces.
Yeah, the entire, this entire parking and driveway system receives the 18-inch stone reservoir for detention underneath it. It's just a matter of where it's introduced. Instead of being introduced, or falling right on the driveway lane, it's introduced 12 feet away at the pervious parking spaces.
Why, curious, design choice, why didn't you use pervious pavement in other places?
You've got more turning movements and traffic in that center aisle there. The pervious pavement does require more maintenance, you have to vacuum it out twice a year, sweep it, so it's just, and it's slightly more expensive to do the pervious, and you get no design benefit. If the water falls, if the water infiltrates into the ground here or 20 feet away, it's irrelevant. So it's just a matter, it's standard treatment in a number of places where you use standard pavement in your driveway aisles, and a pervious treatment in your parking stalls themselves. In addition to that, that stone reservoir, all the roof leaders will either be introduced directly into the stone reservoir for retention, or in the case of the buildings on the north side, we have a little more room between the buildings. We have rain gardens between the buildings to handle the roof leaders before they go into that stone reservoir. The DEP has a calculation for water quality volume that they require. I'm sure you've heard of it. It's basically that first inch of runoff or your first flush that you're supposed to detain in whether it be your rain garden, your detention systems. We're actually over 300% of what's required with the volume of our stone in that subgrade basin. So instantaneously, we can handle over three inches of water if it were to fall instantaneously on the site in that stone reservoir. Again, in your larger storms, your 100-year grader, we do have an overflow system that ties back out into the High Street system, again, which was requested by engineering. They didn't want any direct piping to head out towards the wetlands area. And it's the way that we're keeping the wetland recharged in its similar fashion to what happens now, is right now, the water falls on the site, most of it infiltrates into the grass, because it's grass field. You have some runoff from the grass field in certain storms, but most of it infiltrates into the groundwater. Groundwater typically follows the surface contours, recharges the wetlands below. So by creating a system that relies on infiltration, we're taking all that water and putting it back where it goes now, into the ground, into the groundwater to recharge the wetland. So the wetlands, and Mr. Kenny will testify to this too, the wetlands will continue to operate under the same wetland, the same regime as it operates now currently.
So to that point expressly, Conservation concluded that there was insufficient data to support that conclusion.
Right.
Right? So can you just explain to us why we should come to a different conclusion than Conservation with respect to impact on, you know, the-
And I don't know if Mr. Leclerc would like to expound on it. I don't know why Conservation chose to disregard the testimony of three professional engineers and two soil scientists and environmental experts who all said there will be no impact on the wetlands based upon the project, which is basically what the decision that was made.
Okay.
In a four-to-three vote, you know, in a four-to-three vote, so-
Your position is that there was sufficient data?
Absolutely. Not only, normally we would hire, or the applicant would hire, an engineer and a soil scientist to do their work. After development was done, engineered plans were complete and submitted. We went out and hired a professional engineer, Chris DeAngelis, from Cabesus DeAngelis, to review my work. Wasn't involved in the design at all, reviewed my work. He testified that there would be no impact to the wetlands and the stormwater system was designed appropriately. The town engineer, we addressed all of her comments, she said it was designed appropriately. And then we hired Chris Allen, a soil scientist and environmental expert from Land Tech, to review my work and Mr. Kenny's assessment of the wetlands. He also agreed there would be no impact to the wetlands. So short of hiring more experts than what we already did, I think we built an adequate case for an approval in front of that commission.
Thank you.
Just to give you an idea as to where, and some of the comments from engineering, a lot of it revolved around, because we incorporated a design that they asked us to incorporate, which we agreed with, there were a couple, there's many ways to skin the cat, but they were looking for, let's promote infiltration, keep the wetlands recharged, that will also treat the stormwater that way. So a lot of the comments that came through the two rounds of staff comments were basically to add some analysis points as to where we analyze the post-development versus pre-development flows. So we really, we had four design points that we ended up with, where we're decreasing post-development flows. Design Point One, the obvious one, was at the wetlands edge, we're decreasing post-development flows, surface flows at the wetlands edge. Design Point Two is out in High Point, down towards the bottom of, just above the intersection where High Point and Country Road intersect. The majority of that drainage actually comes from off-site, we only have a small portion. Like 2% of the overall drainage from, in the High Point system, comes from our site, but we analyzed that and we have a decrease there. Design Point Three was a smaller area immediately southeast of the southeast building along this property line that Ms. Pooley asked us to analyze. We showed decreases in those post-development storms. And Design Point Four was where our site flows out on the High Street directly. So instead of out in the main system, where our property leaves on the High Street. So what's critical is, as part of Conservation's requirement, as Mr. Leclerc said, we're supposed to detain the 10-year post-development storm to be less than the two-year pre-development storm, which we were able to do at Design Points One, Three, and Four. Design Point Two, we cannot, because 98% of that drainage comes from off-site, so there's no way to go, and that's why we added Design Point Four at the property line, to show that as far as what we can control, our site, we can knock those flows down, having said that there are still post-development decreases out to the system in High Street, even at the design point to the south. We also developed an erosion and sediment control plan for Conservation where it's going to be developed, probably be developed in two phases, and this is a Conservation requirement, that all the, all your infrastructure, your storm drainage, all that has to be in place before you pull building permits for the individual building. So we'll have a temporary sediment trap in the area of the southeast building here. That will be designed to hold, treat any stormwater with an overflow out to the High Street system during that installation of the infrastructure. After all the infrastructure and stormwater measures are in, Phase Two would be to begin building the construction on each of the buildings themselves. As mentioned, the only activity within the wetland regulated area is we have an area of reinforced grass for a K-turn for the Fairfield Ladder Two. So we actually took the large, the fire department gave us their specific truck with the wheelbase and turning radius and angle, and we made sure that they, we have reinforced grass turnaround area at the end of the parking where that truck can turn around and make a turning movement to get in and out of the site. So that is within the 90-foot regulated area. Small portion of the sidewalk and a guide rail that is at the end of the reinforced turnaround, as well as there's a small stone infiltration basin that Engineering had asked for, and that handles. We have grass-lined swales behind each of the buildings as an added measure to protect the neighbors, so that any water that flows, everything that flows on our site stays on the site and is infiltrated, and none of it goes towards the neighbors, as part of the design.
Is that a stone wall on the, or a retaining wall of some sort?
Yeah.
At the edge, I'm sorry, I'm pointing here, you can't see.
Guard rail.
The guard rail.
There's no wall there. There's a wooden guide rail, and then there's a three-to-one slope, grass slope beyond that, which will all be planted with plantings, which Mr. Kenny can talk about. But yeah, so there's no retaining wall there. Right, and as I said, just to sort of reiterate and summarize, you know, my point about not only us as the design engineer looking at this, I just give you quickly from, and all this is in the record, but Chris DeAngelis, from his, the professional engineer who reviewed my material, he states in his conclusion, conclusion, "It's our professional opinion that the proposed project is in conformance with state and local standards regarding the design of the stormwater management system and the management of erosion and sediment control. We believe that the development will have no adverse impact on abutting properties, the town municipal stormwater system, or the adjacent wetlands located on the eastern side of the property." As I mentioned, Ms. Pooley, you have those documents in there, she indicated that we had addressed all of her concerns. And then Chris Allen, soil scientist and wetland scientist, in his conclusion, again, his third-party review of our design, he did not design anything after it was complete, came in and reviewed it. In conclusion, "It's our professional opinion that the proposed regulated activities will not have an adverse impact on any wetlands or watercourses, satisfies the factors for consideration provided by Section 22A-41 of the Connecticut General Statutes, and satisfies the criteria for approval provided the commission's regulations. It's our professional opinion that the proposed impact mitigation measures, including proposed erosion and sediment control measures, stormwater infiltration and treatment measures, and protection and enhancement of the woodland buffer adjacent to the wetlands will protect the wetland from site development activity, and there will be no impact to the wetlands' functions or values." To with that, I'd certainly like to answer any questions you have from a site designer or stormwater standpoint.
Anyone have any questions? Does anyone have any questions? Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Baker.
So, no, and I'm getting there. I appreciate that, so.
I set up a few of these witnesses, and then we'll talk about whether you want me to start the next one or--
Yeah, go ahead. Very good.
Do you have a question, Mr. Chairman? I'm sorry.
No, that's, I thought you were finished with this witness.
No, I'm not. Did you design this drainage system to make sure there were no negative impacts to any downgradient neighbors?
Yes.
And will this proposal moderate water runoff to the neighbors in contrast to what currently comes from this site in a storm?
There will be best, less post-development stormwater flows to the neighbors.
Will there be any uncontrolled runoff either on the site or downgradient properties or downgradient watercourses?
No, we're controlling all of the runoff on the site.
And is this plan, as you've designed, to comply with state and town stormwater management standards for water quality, flow, and volume?
Yes.
And in your professional opinion, does this project as presented and designed have any adverse impact on wetlands?
No.
In your professional opinion, will this project have any adverse impact on other properties, neighboring or otherwise?
No.
And you're providing additional filtration of the waters into the soil as well as detention. Is that correct?
Yeah, in addition to the detention, there's, as part of the porous pavement, there's a 10-inch-deep sand filter right underneath the porous pavement, which provides filtration of any pollutants out of the stormwater.
And--
That's in addition to the 18-inch stone layer?
Correct. Above the stone layer, there's a sand filter.
And am I correct, it's in one of your reports, that 98%, 98.5% of the water on the High Street at the high data point that you referenced comes from other properties, not from this site? Is that correct?
That is correct. That is that design point I mentioned, north of the intersection of High Street and Country Road.
And could you just tell the commission briefly the area where the fire truck turnaround is? What exactly is that composed of? What is that surface made of?
So it's, the top six inches of topsoil is mixed in with polymer fibers, which lock up the soil. It still allows it to drain and infiltrate, but provides it for, to be structurally sound for fire truck apparatus, emergency vehicles. It's often used, it's used all over the country, often used in overflow parking areas and areas where you have emergency vehicle lanes and access.
This is something, just for the record, I'll note, the fire chief met with us several times and agreed that that is fine for that location. He's issued their comments. Also, a question, I'll address something now before I forget, and that has to do with snow. What are we doing with snow? Because there's no snow shelves on this. We're doing the same thing we do over at Pine Tree. We cart the snow off the property. If, and that's one of the advantages of, again, porous pavement, putting it under cars, it's hard to plow a parking lot under cars. That's why we have slip and falls and other incidents, because you've got to move all the cars when you have a freeze thaw going on. Under this system, you could plow the middle easily if there's measurable snow. Any other little snow would melt during the day typically and go right into the pavement, so you don't get that frozen ice or that black ice. What we do at Pine Tree is the same thing we would do here. The housing authority has a contractor coming in, cart any of the snow offsite. So we don't pile it on the fire truck turnaround. We don't plow it onto parking spaces. We don't lose parking sidewalks. We don't put it out into the street. And that works fine at Pine Tree, and we have that same plan here. One question that came up is about the survey datum, NAVD 88 versus NGVD 1929. And you may appreciate this, mother applications, Conservation wants the 1929 datum, the NGVD, but engineering and their footnotes, and our footnotes, talks about the NAVD 88. And one of the engineering comments wants us to use the 88 datum, not what the Conservation wants, the 1929 datum. Could you briefly explain what the bottom line of that academic distinction is between those two numbers, if anything?
Yeah, so that recently, the 80, well, not so recently, the 88 datum is basically a foot higher than the 29 datum. So there was an adjustment made, and this is a datum above sea level. So basically, all your FEMA mapping used to be in 1929, now all the FEMA floodplain mapping, most of it, and some of your smaller towns are still referencing 29 datum, but most of it's been brought to 88 datum. It's simply a number. What we used, actually, for our datum, or the surveyor used, was the engineering department's datum, which was different altogether, because they had, basically what they, my understanding is historically, engineering was running into an issue where they got down close to sea level, and some of their structures were having negative numbers, and it gets confusing when you're doing, you know, taking elevations on pipes and they're all negative, you know, so a larger negative is actually lower. So they added, simply added 15 to all of their numbers. So our stuff is actually higher, 15 feet higher than the 29 datum. I guess--
They just added 15?
Yeah, to keep, to make sure that everything, all of their records for sewer and storm and things were out of the, that's my understanding, were, was, they didn't have any negative numbers by doing that.
I'm sure they didn't.
Right, right. But my point is, it's, from where, it would be relevant if we were down in a floodplain area. The fact is, whether we call a benchmark out in the road 100, 1,000, or 10,000, as long as we design everything according to that design point, and everything's relative, it doesn't matter. The entire model can go up or down. So all of our elevations are consistent with what the surveyor provided to us.
Is your point that you're measuring the difference, right?
The difference.
And whether you start with a reference point of 10, or 1, or 100, it's--
This floor, whatever you're going to call this floor, that table is 36 inches higher, whether you call it 1,000 feet or one foot. And that was something, we had that discussion with engineering, because they were getting negative numbers by the beach, and to make a negative bigger is not intuitively, there were mistakes being made with making a negative higher or lower, did you go negative or more positive? It's strange, but anyways. But the contours and the map are all correct. Is that correct, Mr. Baker?
Correct.
And you designed the turf area, obviously, to support the weight of the truck, not just the turning radius, but the weight of the truck, as the fire department provided?
Correct.
And do you have an opinion as to a reasonable degree of certainty as to whether this project, as you've designed it and as the site has been proposed, will adversely impact public health, safety, or welfare, or raises a substantial public safety interest?
It's my opinion it will have no impact, no negative impact.
And do you have an opinion as to whether this development will protect the environment?
Yes, I believe there's actually an improvement to the environment, especially the wetlands buffer, under our proposed planting plan.
Then I have one more minute, I'll summarize so you don't, we can be efficient. We did do peer reviews, they're in the records. Laura Pooley, our engineer, her report is in your record as well on the disk. We also did peer reviews. In case you don't know what a peer review is, P-E-E-R, not like the water piers. Peer review is when we went out and found, retained another engineering firm and another soil scientist. We approached them, Carol Martin, and I went to them and said, "These are the plans, these are the drawings. Look at these and give us your opinion as to whether these are designed correct, whether you agree with the reports we have." It's unusual, you won't typically see anything like that. We felt strongly on the site that we wanted to make, you know, belts and suspenders plus. So those are the peer reviews that you have, which agreed with us on those numbers, and that's what a peer review is that we're talking about, and you'll see those brief reports as well. So, Mr. Chairman, at this point, I know you've got the 11 o'clock cutoff, and we have a few more witnesses. We actually have the soil scientist, Mr. Kenny, and Mr. Galante, the traffic expert.
So, thank you, and it's a logical cutoff here. How many more witnesses do you have?
Just Mr. Kenny, soil scientist, and Mr. Galante, and that would be it, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, very good. So I do have a request from Mr. Green that this be continued not to our next meeting at the end of October, but to our November meeting. Do you have any objection to that?
I guess the only concern would be that we, you know, when you get sworn in, I was talking to staff before we start, those of you that get reelected, win the new term, so we have a full body, so we don't have to duplicate everything that's been done to get a vote before.
Well, you wouldn't have to duplicate anything that's already been done. It would be incumbent upon any new commissioner that is sworn in to review the tape of this proceeding, which is being broadcast on Fair TV, which is available on online, on demand, YouTube, et cetera, the same way that one of us would come up to speed if we missed a meeting. So I don't consider that to be significant in--
I just wanted to note that I'm not--
Do you have an, as the applicant, do you have an objection to--
What date would you be looking at, Mr. Jol? What date?
I think it's November, what is it, Mr. Went? November 15th?
12.
12, November 12.
Right, so, you're here? Yes? Yes, Michael? Yes. Our, yes? I forgot, we also have Mr. Saltis. He's the LEP. He will be brief. He has to talk about soils. This is such a very interesting issue in town. We had an LEP--
You don't need to prep it.
So that's why I'm telling you, that's why we have soil scientists.
You got three witnesses instead of two.
Two.
Understood. And all the other witnesses that have been here need to come back in case Mr. Green wants to question them, or, you know, if there are other questions for them of the commission. And November 12 is okay, then?
Yeah, where's Mr. Bailey? Paulie? You're good? It looks good for our team. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, yes.
Okay, very good. So with that, members of the public, unfortunately, I'm sorry, this public hearing is taking more than one session. It's going to be continued until November 12. The applicant will have three witnesses. What do you think? Half an hour? An hour?
For each one?
Okay. We're going to finish--
I expect an hour, Mr. Chairman, an hour, all three of them.
Okay, very good. Which means we will get to public comment, okay? Mr. Green will be succinct, I'm sure, okay? So we're going to do our best to get to public comment next hearing, which will be on November 12. With that, I'm going to continue this hearing, and I'm adjourned the meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.